All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to today's city council study session for Monday, March twenty fourth. We have three items up for to upper discussion tonight. Up first is Director of Finance Kevin Ingles here to present the monthly financial reviews for February twenty twenty five as well as the preliminary twenty twenty four update as well. Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kevin Ingles, Director of Finance. We're going to talk about two of the general fund monthly financial reports this evening. We're going to start with a preliminary December twenty twenty four report. This is preliminary because we are still going through the audit process and there could be some changes. We don't anticipate anything significantly changing from these numbers. If it does, we'll certainly let you know. So for year to yearly revenues, overall, we came in at about ninety seven percent of budget, which is about what we estimated when we revised our estimates during the twenty twenty five budget process last summer. We knew revenues were going to come in a little bit under budget just because of the general economic conditions around the country and here locally. Sales tax overall ended up down about point eight percent. Considerable portion of that is the marijuana tax. Was it down about two hundred and forty thousand versus twenty twenty three? It's been a steady decline since the peak in two thousand twenty one. And that's that's right in line with actually, we're doing a little bit better than Denver did. But the whole the whole state is down for that revenue. Franchise fees were also down a little bit. We noticed that both cable TV and cellphone collections were both down slightly for the year. So we think that might be another trend we need to keep track of. Overall, up about three percent versus last year. Most of that you'll see is in property tax and charges for services. The charges for services is almost entirely due to the city taking over the city center property management from what used to be Eave. That's not actually a growth item. And property tax was a collections of the last assessment year. This is an assessment year, so we'll get new collection amounts for next year. Expenditures, they're also at about ninety seven percent of budget. So we made up for some of the lower revenues with keeping expenditures in line. You'll notice human resources and public works both appear to be over budget. Human resources will definitely need a supplemental. We'll be bringing that back to you. We're currently scheduled for the first meeting in May to bring that back to you. Public Works, we're still reviewing. It could be part of the dedicated sales tax for their capital spending. And you'll see that on the slide coming up here. That capital is a little bit over budget as well, it looks like. So we may have to reclass some of those expenses because they can only spend up to that dedicated sales tax amount. Community development's a little bit above last year. A lot of that is due to a new contract with RTD for the shuttle service. That is fully offset by a revenue line item in the intergovernmental line item. Public Works, again, that's some of that is the dedicated sales tax spending. Some of that is also the when they took over the city center property management from what was formerly Eave. Twenty twenty four, there was a full year of that. Twenty twenty three, they were only in charge of that for two months. So that's a significant portion of their of their increase. Parks, Recreation and Library, up some, again, offset by revenues. They had a very good revenue year, and so they kept staff on for additional for some additional time to cover those additional days that were they were able to stay open. Interdepartmental programs that next to the last line there, that's an increase, and that's due to the optional program that we offer staff where they can cash in some of their unused leave balances and put that into their retirement account. So there was a fairly significant increase versus two thousand twenty three participation in that. Here's the breaking down the expenditures by category. Again, that capital, we're still we're still looking into that dedicated sales tax. There may be a small adjustment there. Everything else is the personnel. There was a five percent increase and a couple of positions added for twenty twenty four. Everything else really is in line with inflationary items that we're seeing. Overall operating results. For the year, about one point three million. That's right in line with the amended budget that we ended up in the year. So no surprises, just what we had budgeted for. And overall, you see that modest increase in revenue and then about twelve percent increase of overall expenditures. Some of that, once again, is dedicated to the city center property management. That's about one point eight million of that. Just a review of your transfers. About four and a half million was transferred out for capital projects. And ending fund balance composition. See there, that's there's your operating results of one point three million. Overall transfers out of four point eight. That's a little different than this previous slide because there is another transfer out. It's not for capital. It's for the Downtown Development Authority. They're the sales tax that they they share with us. That's about four hundred thousand. Then you have your restrictions. Still reporting unrestricted reserve in the middle of the range that council has adopted. That's at sixteen point seven percent. And that's about eleven point six million. And it looks like we're going to end the the year at about four point six million of unassigned fund balance. That is the December report. I'll pause for questions now before we get into the next report.
Kevin, thank you very much for that portion of the presentation. Any questions from Council? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you, and thank you for the report. On on the general fund revenues, the second page where it talks about EMERFRENS, why are they down two hundred and three thousand?
So there are two two pieces to that. They had a little bit more. So what we transfer over from EMERF is excess revenues over expenditures. They generally don't have many expenditures, but they did have a little bit of legal fees this year because they're working on two new leases. That's a small portion of it. There's also an administrative fee that we hadn't charged them previously that we did start in two thousand twenty four. That's most of that. There's also one leasing, and you'll see this in the February report as well, that fell behind a couple of months. We've contemplated them, and they are catching up with that. They had a personnel change and some of the communications were lost, so we had to catch up on those.
Okay, most of the time, it's pretty level, right? That's why I thought it was unusual. The other thing is, like a lot of these general fund expenditures, why are we not at a hundred percent? I mean, because this is the end of the year report, right?
Yeah, once we complete the audit, we will be, and you'll know, yeah, twenty twenty three, we're at a hundred percent. Is that that's how we've done it. We want to still show that this as compared to budget in this report. When we bring the final annual report to you in June, we'll have that. It'll it'll be we'll only use be actual.
Okay, because they'll actually change the I mean, the budget is the projection of what we're going to spend.
Yes.
And so that projection will be changed to what the actual expenses were.
We won't actually amend the budget, but we will report it that way, yes.
Okay. All right. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Ward.
I'm curious how how we make a determination on what goes into this capital line under expenditures and what goes under the departments? Because we do a lot of capital projects. And I see the note, and you covered this a little bit, surf costs and the street maintenance. But are there other things that would normally go into that capital line? And why would we include surf together with street maintenance?
So in the general fund, the only capital we keep in the general fund is and surf is for individual departments and their contribution to replacing their vehicles. So it's not a true capital project, but it's capital spending. And then the dedicated sales tax, we keep in there mostly as a way to track it because it's a percentage of general fund sales tax collections.
Okay, so we're sort of segregating that, but we've made the decision to segregate it with surf as opposed to just keeping it exclusive. I think it would be helpful for me to see how much revenue we're deriving from that sales tax and and then we can see how we're spending it as well more directly as opposed to having it kind of in a pot with something else. It gets a little more confusing for me that way.
We can certainly we can certainly have a subcategory under that if that makes more sense to you. We do report it separately in the annual report, but we haven't been in the monthly report.
Okay.
We're certainly open to that.
Okay, this might just be an artifact of the monthly report then. And the the thirteen point nine million dollar Public Works budget would include routine street maintenance and other things that were occurring prior to the voters authorizing the additional sales tax as well.
Yes, it their normal budget, and the only addition to that would be the extra capital spending.
Okay, okay. I think that explains it well enough for me to understand. Thank you.
Member Russell, did you have another question or? Actually, just a quick question on to follow up on Member Russell's question regarding the EMERF revenues. Is there a reason why those aren't two separate line items, the legal fees versus the revenues for EMERF? Because don't we lose the visibility of the legal fees if we're just capturing one? Just the actual inflow of revenue?
So again, it's it's the detail we're representing here is just a general fund. The fees aren't in the general fund. They're an actual EMERF fund, so we don't represent that on a monthly basis. It is in the annual.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. That makes sense. Any further questions on twenty twenty four? All right, I guess we can move on to the next item, Kevin.
Okay, now we're going to look at the February two thousand twenty five general fund report. So for revenues for the first two months of this year, we're at about fifteen point eight percent of budget. That compares to about sixteen percent last year. So we're we're basically flat with last year. There's a couple of line items that are a little bit a little bit different we'll talk about here. But overall, less than less than a half a percent above last year. Sales and use tax, we are down a little bit. We are seeing that trend continue. Two months isn't we can't extrapolate much out of that quite yet. Probably when we bring the April report in May, we'll have one quarter of collections and we'll have a much better idea how this year's going. But it does seem to be tracking along with how we finished last year, which is flat to maybe slightly down. Marijuana continues to slide. Again, that's a regional regional impact as well. We are looking a little closer into that. We noticed one of the businesses, and I can't go into details on which one, but one of the businesses does seem to be worse off than the other two. So we're going to be looking at that business a little bit closer. Just normal slight variances across the board elsewhere. EMERFRENS, again, that one vendor, I think we've we there are now caught up in March. So you'll see that variance should go away. Expenses, there are some significant variances here I wanted to let let you know about. Across the board, there's one extra payroll in two thousand twenty five versus two thousand twenty four. That's about one point seven million of the difference of you see that bottom line, two point three million. That's about one point seven of that. That will realign when we bring back the March report. Those number of payrolls will equal again. And that's across all departments. That intergovernmental or excuse me, interdepartmental programs down there, that's a timing difference in that PT that leave cash out that I mentioned in the December report. That's a timing difference of about three hundred fifty thousand from last year as well. That it didn't happen until March of last year. It happened in February of this year. So overall, a little over two million in timing differences. So we're tracking right along with what where we were at last year. By category, you see that large variance in in personnel that will that will realign next month when we bring that report. Everything else, pretty much in line. Commodities is a high percentage, but it's sixty seven thousand. So we can't really read too much into that. That's probably a timing difference in one some department. Even with the timing difference, we're still pretty close to being on on time on track with budget at that seventeen point eight percent. So I expect the March report to look quite a bit better than this one does just because of those timing differences. Again, here's your operating surplus or deficit. We are at a deficit. We would actually be a surplus if you took those timing differences out of about a half a million, which is about where we were last year as well. Here's this year's transfers, about two point three million net transfer out for capital projects as approved in the budget. And here's your fund balance composition report. Carrying forward the ending total fund balance last year of eighteen point seven million. You've got your operating results, again, timing differences of about two and a half, two point three million there. And your transfers out. And so any fund balance at the end of February is fourteen point seven million. Got a few restricted and reserve line items there. Those haven't changed from last year. Again, your sixteen point seven percent, middle of your range is you're still eleven point eight million unrestricted reserve. And that leaves about three hundred thousand unassigned fund balance. Again, if you add back that two point three million, you're about two point six unassigned fund balance for the timing differences. That is the February report.
Kevin, thank you so much. Thank you very much for that. Any questions on the February finance report? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. I just have a question on the Stadium District refund. Why are those numbers negative?
We show them as negative because it's pulling off of the total unrestricted reserve. We want to show that it's a restriction. It's it's not that it's a negative amount. It's it's just set aside.
Okay, so there still is a hundred and eighty two thousand in it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Member Ward.
This question is probably very similar to questions I've asked you in the past, but three hundred and seven thousand dollars is the lowest I have ever seen this number in the entire history of my studying the finances of the city of Inglewood. Should should I be nervous? Or are we just keeping a steady hand on the wheel, and this is a sign that we're more effectively managing our finances?
Well, the three hundred and seven, again, the timing difference is that it's it's about two point six million if you to put the timing differences back in. If you recall, we budgeted for it to be around zero unassigned fund balance at the end of this year. We did budget to use to have some deficit spending this year. We're not seeing any surprises. Once again, we definitely would need to keep track of sales tax. If that trend does continue down, then we'll we'll have to have to to look into that. But right now, we're we're about where we thought we were going to be with budget wise.
Okay, thank you.
Member Wright.
Thank you. My problem is is my information looks like this. And the budget information for February was not in my pack. Can I get a paper pack? The information that I'm able to see from twenty twenty four was our sales tax revenue was trending down already. I'd asked for, you know, questions last year, and it seems to continue trending down from what I'm able to see today. So it's a continuing concern, especially in different areas. The information I have in this pack is from last year that it was showing total businesses opening to those closing. We're definitely not seeing match for match. For this year, I don't know what that total is. So it looks like we're in a deficit right now. So how much is that going to continue to impact us if we continue on this trend when it comes to and I know bigger businesses would impact on sales tax more than smaller businesses, but it's I think we need to look at this on how big of an impact that is for us.
Yeah, and like I said, I mean, it's early in the year, but we are seeing the trend from last year continue with sales tax even to slightly down. There's there's a lot of national things going on that are impacting consumer confidence. And a lot of our our revenues come from sales tax, which is people spending money. So people get nervous and they don't spend money. It's going to impact, sure.
It is. Okay, thank you.
If I could add to that, keeping in mind the trends are what we budgeted for. So what we're seeing in terms of that decrease is how you the budget you passed last year was with the assumptions that Kevin has gone over. So even though, yes, we have been trending down, most cities in around us are trending down much more than we are, and we planned for this, which is why, you know, we had much more of limited increases last year, use some of that unassigned fund balance. And keeping in mind, too, Member Ward's question, you know, with the when you account for the timing, we have two point six million unassigned fund balance. That's on top of your reserve, which is what dollar amount?
Eleven point eight million.
So we have in reserves eleven point eight million plus another two point six, which will show up in your next should show up next month, right?
Yes.
Yep. And so it's a very, very healthy reserve and unassigned fund balance that we're working with here. And we have planned for this, you know, decrease in sales tax.
All right, any further questions? All right, go ahead, Member Russell.
So why did we plan for a decrease in sales tax?
Well, yeah, go ahead.
Well, we already saw the trend. The trend went back to the end of two thousand twenty three. So we were able to incorporate some of that. We didn't. We incorporated for less growth, if you remember during the twenty four budget and the twenty five budget as well. Not so much twenty four, excuse me. But so we saw that coming. We knew there was uncertainty politically, nationally. So those things all play into account when we make our predictions. We're going to bring our twenty six revenue and expenditure forecast to you here in a couple of weeks. And I'm assuming you'll see something very similar. Revenues are not going to be growing much.
Okay, and I guess what I'm saying, this council has decided that we didn't want to leave that healthy unassigned fund balance there. We needed to spend it on things that we need now. I understand that we planned for that. But planning for the others, I mean, it is a little bit concerning. I mean, we've had some big businesses close in Inglewood, and that is what is concerning. And losing the sales tax from those things like Hobby Lobby and Big Lots, that all adds up. And I mean, we can't continue that trend. I don't have an issue with planning to use up and and fixing things in the current economy, but we're getting to the point where we don't have that money anymore. So we'll have to live within our means. Thank you.
Member Ward.
I think this does bring up a philosophical discussion that perhaps now is maybe not the appropriate time to have. But there there are a couple of philosophies at work, and one of which is that a three hundred and seventy thousand dollar unassigned fund balance is a sign that we're planning appropriately. We're taking in taxpayer money, and we are putting that money towards the things that it is designed to do. The reason why we collect it is so that we can spend it for the taxpayer benefit. And even still, within that plan, we have sixteen point seven percent of our estimated revenues that are in reserve right now, reserves that we could potentially dip into if tax situation changes. So as as odd as it is for me to see that three hundred and seven thousand dollar, you know, unassigned fund balance when I'm used to having four or five million dollars to play with at the end of a year or the beginning of the planning cycle, I think it's not I wouldn't take it as a sign that we're not in good health. We're just not flush with cash because we have taken the money in and we have spent it appropriately for the public benefit.
Thank you, Member Ward. Member Russell.
Thank you. And I absolutely agree with Councilmember Ward. But what I am concerned about, once we start dipping into the sixteen point seven percent reserves, and we don't have a plan to replenish that, then we're going to be in trouble. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Those are going to be discussions we have over the next few months when we discuss the twenty twenty six budget. So, but yeah, it's a good point to keep in mind while we have those discussions. All right, with no further questions, Kevin, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Council.
All right, moving on to the second item for tonight, we have Director of Community Development Brad Power here to discuss the Affordable Housing Task Force recommendations. Good evening, Brad.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Brad Power, Community Development Director, City Manager Lewis, Deputy City Manager Dodd, and I are here to share in this presentation as a follow up to what you heard from the Affordable Housing Task Force on January twenty fifth relative to the recommendations that they made to you for your consideration. The point of tonight is to put some general ideas in front of you for discussion and possible direction around some of the topic areas that the task force took on and recommended to you in January. So that's our plan for this evening. And City Manager Lewis, we'll start off with the presentation.
Thank you, Director Power. We'll just go over the categories, as you recall, from the Affordable Housing Task Force. Thank you, Director Power. Uh, we'll just go over the categories, as you recall, from the Affordable Housing Task Force. The, they, they were administrative and organizational, community engagement, funding, development initiatives, community support, and access initiatives. So we'll start with, um, the first recommendation that you've, um, heard from the task force, um, at the study session recently, next slide. Which was, uh, full-time housing coordinator. So this was a recommendation, just really kind of as they looked at other programs, as they looked at the necessity for, um, you know, someone to coordinate the activities that were, that they were calling for later on in the plan. They really felt like a staff member was needed. So, but how we structured the presentation is if you, um, want to say kind of yes to us proceeding and looking into this, um, we gave some action steps that we think would be necessary to carry out this recommendation. And then we just did a very, very high level staff analysis of feasibility in the form of a red dot, a green dot, uh, and, or yellow. And so green is easy to do, um, you know, very doable. Yellow is proceed with caution. It could, it could be done, but it will be kind of challenging, and red will be very challenging, um, as we see it. So a couple of times you'll see two dots, and we'll explain that. So if you wanted, um, a staff to go ahead and proceed with looking at a full-time housing coordinator, the first thing would be to develop a job description, talk about the work plan, which would be guided by your other inputs that you'll give on this and other, uh, affordable housing steps to come. So we would develop that, pretty easy to do, um, and then we would need to identify the funding source, a little more challenging. So, um, for initial funding, um, if you don't know, we have a fund in the city called Fund Forty-Six. It's a very technical term there. Uh, that was from, uh, funds that we are still receiving, although not in large amounts anymore. From our, when we, as a city, ran a housing rehab rehabilitation program. So it's federal dollars, we were the pass-through, we made loans to people, um, to, you know, uh, upgrade and purchase homes, uh, that were affordable. And then we, when those homes sell, we get that funding back into the pot. So you'll see sometimes a big spike, um, one year, when how home sales in general are high, and then you'll see that down lower when it's not. We also received some, um, yearly repayments from that, although that's a very small portion. So this program was in place from nineteen seventy-four, um, to, I think, twenty fourteen. And right now, the fund balance for that is about one point one million. So it's a pretty healthy fund that we've used for various things. Right now, um, annually, you dedicate about a hundred thousand dollars out of that fund for the home repair program for low-income folks who have an emergency repair or something that they need to make improvements on their house to keep it livable. So we're helping keep people in their homes using this fund today as, as council allocates annually. So what we would suggest is that if you did want us to proceed, we have a short-term funding source. So that's why there's a green dot. The red dot is because this is not a good funding source long-term. It's not something, it's being replenished, but much slower than what we would be spending out of if we were going to use this aggressively to fund affordable housing initiatives. So, um, little nuance there. Um, ongoing, we would, um, uh, we've talked about dedicating a portion of future McClellan lease revenue to affordable housing. As you know, this council, a decade or more ago, created the Long-Term Asset Renew, uh, Reserve Fund. And that was where, when we had a new lease, um, and leases came into the city, uh, excuse me, at McClellan Reservoir, where we own a lot of land at E four seventy, uh, off E four seventy, the funds for that were initially created to go into LTAR, Long-Term Asset Reserve, um, for, you know, expenses for, you know, kind of large-scale expenses. We deleted that particular fund a few years ago, but we still have that revenue coming into the city. So it's just simply supplanting, um, our, you know, our revenue in the general fund each year. Right now, we get, um, I believe it's about, uh, three million dollars a year from that funding, uh, from that, from the lease of all of that land out there that, um, is leased to various entities. We do have, um, a, an LOI for two of the last remaining parcels out there, um, which are estimated to generate anywhere between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars a year. That's money that will be coming to the city when the, when the development that's planned for those two lots is fully constructed. And there's kind of a ramp up. While they're in construction, they pay a little, and then when they're fully built, they pay that full eight hundred to a million dollars. So what we are suggesting, staff is suggesting, is that that could be a funding source that would be, could be dedicated to affordable housing. It's actually housing that's going in out there. It's an apartment complex, market rate. And so we would be using that revenue coming from Douglas County, from that private sector lease, um, into the city that could be dedicated to this fund. The one that we give caution to, and you just had the discussion about the general fund and some of the challenges that we're seeing there with sales tax, you know, continuing to level off and or dip a little bit, is that finding or reallocating general fund dollars would be harder. So you're getting the full kind of rundown of the Affordable Housing Fund that, um, I believe Deputy City Manager Dodd will be covering. But we just wanted to mention that the funding sources, those are kind of the funding sources we've seen. Deputy City Manager Dodd has a few others that I didn't discuss here. All right, if you said, no, we're not really interested in that, if you still wanted to have some staffing resource to that, we could contract that out. We have talked to the Housing Authority, for instance, um, about their capacity and ability to potentially, you know, help us run some sort of affordable housing program. Another thing we've discussed is partnering, um, with another jurisdiction to share resource. We're saying that that would be a little harder because Littleton, for instance, already has their own person dedicated to this. So they're running their inclusionary zoning program and doing other affordable housing type activities. So it's possible they would not be, um, keen on, you know, partnering, um, in a tri-cities or, or other regional staff, step. Although Sheridan could be a source, but again, they are as or more budget constrained than we are. And then, of course, assigning work to an existing staff member, I put this as, as red, very difficult to do, but it would probably in, uh, it would probably entail, you know, finding a position that would just need to be repurposed. So essentially a reduction in force that would then be repurposed into a different position that would be focused towards, um, housing. So what we want to do at the end of each one of these recommendations is just ask you, what other steps have we not considered? What, what, what is your direction on, actually, Mayor, this is a question for you. Would you like us to take direction on each of these, or just ask council to give us, like, can you look into this and we can bring that back for a later day?
Well, I was going to ask, is there a preference that council kind of sees on this, or? Go ahead, Member, uh, Noonan Kemp.
Given time, I would like to give direction where we can tonight. I'm also very cognizant that we are down a member. And so I think where we have a simple majority here and we can give direction, great. If we look like we're close, maybe we punt that specific item until when Member Anderson is back would be my request.
Yeah, I think that that probably does make sense. If anybody has any objections. Go ahead, Member Russell.
My question is, we haven't even really talked about the overall plan and what we would like to do overall. And now we're going to start giving staff direction here and there and not really plan what this group wants to do as a body? I have a problem with that.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anyone else? Go ahead, Member Ward.
I think I might like to go through all the options first and then per- perhaps weigh them against each other and decide where we want to go.
Okay. Let's do that. Let's go down. I think that that probably makes a little bit more sense just depending on, uh, yeah, and then we could kind of summarize at the end.
Okay, great. So if you want to jot down notes or something that, uh, other things that we are not considering here. And again, you'll get a little bit more information from Deputy City Manager Dodd about funding sources other than just what, um, I shared in the previous slide. All right, let's go on to the second recommendation, which is creating a, uh, Housing Advisory Board. So the, the task force felt like, in order to have, um, you know, a, a citizen or stakeholder input into the affordable housing program of the city, that probably we should be looking at some sort of resident, um, and stakeholder board that would help guide the city in this. And so if you want to proceed with this, we would be developing bylaws, goals, responsibilities of that, similar to what we do with any other board or commission. Identifying staff liaison, that'd be a little bit challenging unless there's a yes to the previous, um, recommendation about a, uh, housing coordinator. Although we could, you know, it's, it's not a red because I think we could still do that. And then we'd be recruiting board members and developing that work plan with the board members. If no, you're not interested in that, we, you know, talked about, could we identify an existing board that could, you know, fill these? We could not come up with a good answer in terms of an existing board that would have any relationship to affordable housing that could take on that role. But we put that as a, as a yellow. And then having council serve in the advisory role, we think with your workload, that would be very difficult for you to be advisors to staff, um, in this. So we'll ask you at the end of the presentation to think about other things that we have not thought of, if you wanted to. And, and there, the other option that's not on here is just not to have an advisory board, which is of course an option. All right, recommendation. All right, the third one is, uh, community education campaigns. And so, um, here, we really, you know, have been doing some good work in this area. The campaign that's currently underway and continuing is the Home is the Key Campaign. So certainly, if you want us to do this, we'll continue that campaign, um, working with communications and possibly an affordable housing board, um, on timing and messaging for additional future efforts. So this is something that, you know, we've done videos, we've done social media posts, we've done magazine articles about the Home is the Key Campaign. That would probably move from more of an informational, um, campaign into more of a, here's what we're doing, here's how to get involved. And, and, and that's the type of community messaging campaign that we could be doing, um, if you wanted us to, can you? All of these, by the way, are very feasible. If you didn't want to do that, we could complete the funding that you've already allocated for the Home is the Key Campaign. And then, um, you know, just do no additional community education campaigns. And I think I'm turning it over to Tim.
Great, thanks, Sean. Uh, so the first two slides are going to be, and then I'm going to go over pretty straightforward. They're basically about whether council would want us to do a further analysis, um, of funding options. And then after that, I'm going to go over more detailed slides that, as City Manager Lewis mentioned, um, are going to, going to go into some funding options that you have. So, uh, the first step is if you want us to, um, analyze and look at funding options, what we would likely do in that case is work with a consultant. Root Policy, mentioned here, is one, um, many of you are familiar with, uh, that specializes in affordable housing that the city has worked with before. Um, and so if that is the direction council wants to go into, um, we would engage Root, um, or see what other options are out there as well, um, to review the report of the task force, um, and then to look at, um, and analyze each of the different funding options that I'm going to go over on a future slide about, uh, the cost, the impact, uh, the positives and the negatives of each, of which there, there are, of course. Um, and then if, if you don't want us to do that, of course, we just won't take any action on that. Uh, the next slide again is, um, also if no, we could, um, if you don't want us to pursue other options for funding that I'm going to go over on the next slide. In addition to just not taking action, we could also, you know, look at whether, um, you want us to prioritize affordable housing with our general, general fund constraints that currently exist. So now I'm going to go over, uh, some of the funding options. I'm going to go over them at a relatively high level. You see a lot of yellow on this slide, um, and I think the, the reason for that is all of these have, um, challenges. They also have great opportunities. Um, council, of course, could choose to do none of these. You could also choose a mix, um, as of course your warehousing prediction, production has its costs. And so a lot of cities have tried, um, some of these, uh, some of them are more common than others. Um, and there are a few that we think would be easier than others, and some of these are similar to what Manager Lewis has mentioned. So the first one, inclusionary zoning, or inclusionary housing requirements. So under this model, as I'm sure you're aware, essentially, uh, there could be requirements in these inclusionary housing areas that, um, developers would need to produce a certain, uh, percentage of affordable housing, and that could typically be either for sale, um, or for rent. Um, and then if they don't, there, there could be a fee in lieu, which basically, of course, means, um, a fee that they have to pay, uh, to the city if they choose not to, to produce those, um, items. And then Proposition One, Two, Three, um, as I'm sure you're aware, passed by the voters, I believe, in two thousand twenty-two, so it's been on the books for a couple of years. There are opportunities there, but of course, we're one city that would be competing with many other cities, uh, for costs. There's also requirements, um, that we would have to make, such as the affordable housing, um, production requirements each year. And then also some of the processes that we'd have to put into place to fast-track affordable housing. City Manager mentioned Fund Forty-Six. Um, again, it's a very similar recommendation here that would work in the short term, um, but there are challenges in the long term, um, just because of the way that the funding, um, is utilized. Tax increment financing, of course, is something, uh, that councils, um, looked at in other contexts. This would allow for the subsidization of building or rehabilitation costs. Um, and it could also potentially be used for land acquisition and infrastructure, depending on how that was structured. The future EMERF leases, again, was mentioned by City Manager Lewis. This is something that we believe would be one of the easier options here, just in terms of the structures that we currently have in place. It's a dedicated revenue stream that already exists in the city, um, with some future opportunities and prospects. Uh, the next one is, um, let's see, uh, linkage fees. So, um, linkage fees again are pretty similar to development impact fees. When this council did adopt, um, those about a year ago, I guess it was, there was some discussion at the time about, um, having one that would be specific affordable, for affordable housing. Uh, that is certainly something that could be, um, could be explored. Dedicated property or sales tax, uh, revenue. So of course, uh, council has in the past, um, had sale, or, uh, considered and contemplated going to the voters, uh, for sales tax that were dedicated, um, to specific purposes. As you're probably aware, Denver did have a pretty significant one on their ballot that failed last year. It was Measure Two R that would be for half a percent. So of course it is an option, though, um, and of course there are challenges with that, um, but also opportunities. Uh, the progressive real estate, uh, transfer tax, um, is basically increasing real estate transfer taxes. It's a little bit tricky in Colorado, um, with Tabor. Um, they're, they're officially called, I think, something else like doc, document fees. It still is possible. I think there's about twelve or so cities that do have, um, it might be more than that, uh, something like this. Um, but it's basically a transfer fee that the city could charge on tops of, on top of real estate transactions. And then finally, uh, rental license fees. So these are implementing fees on rentals, um, for, to fund affordable housing. So again, a lot of yellow here, um, a lot of, all of these have, have their, um, challenges and their opportunities. Again, council could, you could, um, focus on one in particular, or, um, you know, it could be a mix of, of multiple options to help fund these programs. Um, and then, of course, again, if, if we don't move, our council doesn't want us to move in any of those directions. The two op, options there would be to either take no action, um, or to consider real, reallocating and prioritizing, um, limited general fund dollars for affordable housing. And I'll turn it over, I think, to Director Power.
Thank you, Tim. I wanted to, uh, shift the discussion and finish with the, uh, land use components of the recommendations that the Affordable Housing Task Force presented to you. And they're a combination of talking about, uh, changing our land use regulations to allow additional uses throughout, uh, certainly in certain zone districts of the city, and then improvements in terms of some of our processes as well. So the first one would be to enable additional small lot development ADUs and cottages, um, around other parts of the city. Now, you know, this is not without, um, taking on some, some angst, uh, because this is some of the things, these would be related to some of the things that the council chose not to implement, uh, in twenty twenty-three with the new code. So adding these types of uses, for instance, in the R-two district, looking at the lot sizes, looking at setback issues relative to allowing additional, uh, elements of these types of development in more parts of the city. I think the task force spent a lot of time talking about our land use code. They started, they, they heard about our land use code pretty extensively. They heard about the changes that were made in twenty twenty-three. So there are a lot of possibilities that exist now that didn't exist, uh, for that type of development prior to the fall of twenty twenty-three. But the task force talked about allowing additional development in the areas that could accommodate it under the theory that if more units are added, the affordability, um, would be increased because the amount of additional units would drive down costs per unit basis. So that was their, their justification for that. Uh, one of the other things that they suggested was to prioritize the review of applications with the housing, affordable housing component, and essentially fast-track them through our development review process. That's something that we could certainly do. Uh, we'd have to define the parameters of what would constitute the requisite amount of affordable housing to do that. But I would say in, in, um, all disclosure, our development review process, I think, is very competitive in the metropolitan area, and especially, uh, in relation to some of our neighbors. But again, fast-track, the idea of fast-tracking affordable projects is something we could definitely take a look at. Uh, and in terms of how we operate, uh, as a department and other departments to review, uh, projects. Uh, the next one, again, looking back at some of the, um, land use discussions they had, was be allow more smaller apartment buildings. We're kind of missing this in terms of our new construction. Our new construction, over the last five years especially, has tended to be larger projects. And we've not really been seeing that four to twenty-unit smaller building project coming in. So the idea of adjusting our land use requirements around that, lot sizes, setbacks, parking requirements, um, those types of things. If there were an appetite to revisit some of those discussions, we could certainly take that on as well. And then I think a very interesting idea is to just, uh, let the affordable housing community, the affordable housing development community, the affordable housing development community know of what we changed, uh, relative to our land use code in 2023. Uh, I think there's still a lot of education to do out there on this, this plank, and our planning manager and I have talked about, uh, actually developing a program to invite people in to learn more about what changed in 2023 and what's possible now. Uh, so if you're not interested in any of these, obviously we'll just go through, um, our regular development review process, affordable or not, as projects come in. Um, and so that is a little bit in terms of the land use, uh, component of it. The task force really talked about really trying to emphasize a diversity of housing types. In the theory being more types, there'd be more opportunities to develop, uh, specific affordability around some of these unit types. Uh, the first is accessory dwelling units. We're feeling pretty good about the fact that the new state law that was passed, relative to every city being required to, um, authorize ADUs. We think that the changes that were made in 2023 are 90% in compliance with that law. The one, the one area that we do need to take a look at is there's some, a very specific setback requirement that's in the state law that we may have to adjust our code. But in terms of the rest of it, uh, we feel pretty confident that our ADUs and our ADU regulations meet the requirements of that recently passed law. Uh, I want to address this. The, the next, um, one is address the missing middle, more small lots, cottages. That's kind of a, uh, similar discussion we had on the previous slide. The other area that they talked about was identifying locations for more supportive and transitional housing. So people who are possibly emerging from homelessness and into, uh, housed and more permanent experience, we're actually, uh, looking at that as part of the comprehensive plan update. So look forward to that as in the spring and the summer. We could have some additional discussions around that. Uh, there's actually also a, uh, community survey on Englewood Engage on the comprehensive plan website that has a discussion and a question about, uh, this particular topic. So we're doing some research as we speak around, uh, that issue. Uh, the last one, ensure building code requirements, or building code supports modular construction. That should actually be a green bubble, um, in discussions with these, with the, uh, chief building official. Uh, the, the code that we're on now, the 2021 code, is pretty comprehensive in terms of supporting modular construction. Modular construction is a little bit different in terms of what we're thinking around this versus mobile homes. That's a different, uh, discussion that we'd have to have separately. But around just general housing type discussion, modular construction is incorporated into the 2021 code. I should say also that the city and county of Denver is gearing up to adopt the 2024 code, and so they'll be doing that. We're obligated through our fire agreement with the city and county of Denver to adopt subsequent to theirs, their action within six months. So the next code revision you'll be seeing prior to the end of the year. So we're already in, in discussions with Denver around that process. But again, we don't anticipate any changes in terms of going back, uh, relative to those to, those code requirements. Uh, if these steps are not something that, uh, the council's interested in, again, we'll just go forward with what we're doing, uh, relative to our, our development regulations. And then lastly, uh, there's some listing of, uh, possible steps around presi, preserving existing housing, the amount of housing that we already have. What can this, what kind of actions could the city undertake or consider to preserve what's in place now? One of the things that, uh, we could revisit is the designation of the Englewood Housing Authority as the location for the right of first refusal. It's now required in state law for apartments, existing apartment buildings, multifamily buildings, that are going to be listed for sale. They're required by law now to notify the appropriate entity that those are coming to market. And that can be designated to another public agency, such as a housing authority, or it could be maintained by a municipality. Since we haven't formally designated it to the EHA, uh, our office has been the subject of probably three or four notices since that law took place, and we've obviously said that we don't have plans or several million dollars to acquire apartment buildings at this point. But the, the EHA has networks in the brokerage community and elsewhere, so the idea of revisiting that discussion might make some sense relative to streamlining going forward. The other thing that we could partner with the EHA on is the yearly allocation that we see from the state for our private activity bonds. You'll recall, last year, we dedicated, uh, Englewood's allocation of around $2 million in a joint, uh, venture, uh, project with Denver and Centennial for an office to housing conversion project in the very north part of the Denver Tech Center. One of the ideas around this is possibly bringing that money and concentrating it more in Englewood and formally partnering with the EHA annually to try to deploy those dollars or that capacity, uh, within the city. Another area that they talked about was the growing nationally, the national trend of, of, uh, corporate ownership of homes, single-family homes particularly, and then they're, uh, passed out for rental. Uh, we could do some research around that, but a lot of, uh, those types of ownerships are held in LLCs that could be different. So there could be one entity that creates different, um, ownership entities. They own a lot of houses. It would be difficult to kind of categorize those, but we could take that on, um, with a little bit more, um, advanced notice and working into our work program. The other thing that came up was there's a lot of people that may be, um, uh, intermittently or at one point in their rental lives or ownership lives that they have a hard time affording, uh, their, their housing for a period of time. The idea of, again, Fund 46 to augment our existing, uh, energy efficiency programs and home repair programs, uh, and the two dots there, as the city manager said before, we could do that with some ramping up, but obviously that's a diminishing, uh, amount of funds in Fund, Fund 46, 46 that wouldn't be replenished. And the last thing that I think that we could do is take on, similar to what we do with our economic development program, is develop partnerships with other entities. And so the county is listed here, but it can include the state, it can include CHAFA, it can include nonprofits, and we would just be a sounding board and a funnel for providing access to that, the information for the, the, uh, services that those types of, uh, entities provide. We do a lot of that with our economic development program, and I could see this kind of being a mirror to that on the affordable housing front. Again, if you're not interested or, uh, wanna take a slower action around that, we could take no action, but we think partnering with the EHA where possible, uh, makes a lot of sense. And then the other thing that we would really like to do is the state and CHAFA offer some landlord, or some, some landlord training and resources, uh, to keep people housed. We'd like to partner with them, bring those types of, um, exchanges to Englewood and invite our landlord, landlord community, uh, to at least consider being part of that. And that concludes our presentation.
Brad, Tim, and Sean, thank you very much for the presentation. Any question? Let's start off with questions on these items before we go into recommendations, though. Any questions from members of council? Go ahead, Member Russell.
The one question that I have that I haven't really seen on any of this is staff thinks we can do it, but I haven't seen any money. How much is each one of these things gonna cost? Because if we don't have an overall picture of how much everything's gonna cost and we start approving things in here and there, we're gonna end up in trouble because we're piecemealing it together.
Yeah, that's a great point, uh, Member Russell. And of course, uh, we spend a lot of time talking about funding mechanisms, but not about the cost. And part of that is that there's a lot of unknowns. And so, uh, that first slide that I went over, which is basically doing the analysis, would, if council wants us to, we'd work with Root or another entity to, to better understand the costs and then try to match the costs with funding options for council to consider.
And I would just add to that, we, you know, at the risk of, uh, staff feeling like we've overstepped staff's role, we wanna take direction from council before we get into in-depth detail on all of these analyses, which is why we try to keep it high level with the red, green, yellow.
I guess I got a couple of questions. Um, so I'll start with the full-time housing coordinator. Um, since there's no title of portable housing coordinator within that slide, is this gonna be someone that oversees all of housing within Englewood, or is their role gonna be specifically around affordable housing?
I'll let my colleagues jump in, but we would anticipate them only, uh, being dedicated to affordable housing initiatives.
Does that require a full-time role, or is that? I know that we kinda talked about it on the second slide about potentially partnering with Sheridan or Littleton, but, uh, not, but, um, I'm, I'm guessing it still require 40 hours a week, right?
If, if my recollection from the task force recommendations is correct, they were anticipating this would be 40 hours. And, and certainly as we've talked about it, we think that there's enough work there. I might mention, we do have a, a somewhat of a model for regionalization on this, in sofar as the Tri-Cities homelessness coordinator is now, has now, because you've all passed the new, uh, action plan, is now, uh, tasked with looking at permanent supportive housing, which is a little bit different than, you know, just kind of traditional affordable housing, workforce housing, if you will. So we are partnering with Sheridan and Littleton, um, to have a dedicated staff resource for, um, looking at options for permanent supportive housing, which is really moving people out of homelessness into, um, you know, housing that they have wraparound services, um, with. So we've got a little bit of a model for that, but we would anticipate for more of this affordable slash workforce housing coordination. It would take a full-time person.
Okay. I was looking at that workforce housing component of it, but that potentially could be added as well.
Do we? Mayor? Go ahead, yes.
If I could just add, uh, the other thing that I think that staff person would be doing that, that's a little bit more broad housing-wise, would be ensuring that we're compliant with the new state laws.
Right.
That have either annual or biannual reporting requirements. Some of those are fairly intensive.
Um, I got a couple more questions, and then I'll pass it over to Member Wright. Um, I'm assuming they would probably utilize Root for this, but do we have any idea how big of a fund we would need, uh, especially when we're talking about the McClellan lease revenues and setting aside a portion of that yearly?
In terms of how, how big a fund we would need for affordable housing?
Right.
Um, I think it depends on, uh, to Member Russell's comment about what the costs were. And so that's why we're presenting all these options. And some, some of the funding options that we presented would be relatively minimal. And so that's why, you know, council may consider a mix that would, um, you know, have, uh, less of an impact on one particular funding stream. Um, but we, yeah, we wanna be able to figure out what council wants us to do, um, and then based on that, we would try to match the funding recommendation to the, to that. And then also, um, you know, with some of the funding that's available from the state, like Proposition 123, there's just a lot of unknowns in terms of whether we would be able to get that funding.
Yeah, and it feels like that funding is very oversubscribed right now in terms of the demands that we're seeing throughout the state, which is why we think Fund 46 is a really good short-term option, because you could do all of your setup costs out of that fund, like the, you know, the analysis, the further analysis, consulting, perhaps, you know, a one-year startup cost for, you know, equipment and furnishings for a new staff member, you know, a lot of those things, we think the affordable housing, our current Fund 46 is a, is a good option for that. It's just not long-term. I also wanna add that we only have 500,000 in un, uh, in loan repayments expected for, for that, before that program really sunsets. So it's a very limited amount of money that we expect coming in over the next, you know, 10 to 15 years. It's at about 3% average loan, it's not gonna be more than, you know, probably 750,000.
Okay. I think the last question I have is, and Brad, you could kinda speak to this. When you talk about fast-tracking the affordable housing component, uh, within applications, what does that look like? What does that mean? Do you wanna just elaborate on that?
Sure. Uh, well, one of the things that we offer for every development is a pre-application meeting, so I don't think that part of it would change. So what we would do following that process is we would essentially coordinate with all of the other city departments to appropriately, depending on whatever criteria are settled upon, to move that project to the head of the line. Uh, we tend to do things in sequence. Things come in, uh, they're assigned a project manager, they're assigned, um, how they'll be reviewed, the deadlines are imposed, uh, and then the staff works through them in sequence. If there is a project that would have an affordable housing component, cities tend to move those, uh, forward, uh, with the idea from the private side, time is money. And so the earlier that they're approved, the earlier they can get started, uh, and, and provide that level of housing.
Thank you, Brad. Uh, Member Wright, go ahead.
Thank you. My first question, when you're talking about affordable housing, what percentage is rental and what percentage is ownership?
I think that's up to you to try to set some targets. What is the overwhelming amount of affordable housing that's being developed in Colorado right now is rental, and that's because of this intractable issue that has been on the books for years now around, um, defects legislation. And that's really present, preventing a for-sale condominium or other type of for-sale product being delivered. And so for the time being, the vast majority of affordable housing that's being developed is, um, for, for rental. Now, the Prop 123 and other, uh, state requirements, um, really, uh, talk about the, the sweet spot for the area median income for those types of, uh, developments is anywhere from 60 to 80% of the area median income is really the target group of people that are aimed to be housed through some of those state-level initiatives. Um, but unfortunately, um, the development community's really been sealed off from develop, delivering affordable, um, for-sale. The task force talked extensively about that, and they wanna make sure that if the city is ever in position to develop policies around for-sale housing when the market is proven, uh, they wanna definitely make sure that people can, uh, acquire a home, um, as a buyer and not necessarily being a renter, um, as long as they qualify.
And I'll, I'll wait for those questions until open. My, my next one is the streamlined development process, um, promote and conduct briefing, briefings for affordable housing developers on housing options created in Title 16 in 2023. Why would we not be doing that now and wait for task force recommendations or council green line? Why wouldn't we not be letting developers, especially, like, developers looking at affordable housing to be doing that proactively?
Yeah, we certainly can, and, and the planning manager and I have talked about doing that at some point this year. At this point, it's been a work balance issue, uh, with our staff. Uh, we're spending a lot of time on other projects right now. Some of those are starting to lean, to, to loosen up a bit, and so the idea of creating a formal program around this is something we can take on very quickly.
Okay. I have others, but I'll hold off for now. Thank you.
Member Prank.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Um, I have a few questions. I'll start with a really easy one. Can someone define what a tenant equity vehicle is to me?
As I understand it, not being an affordable housing expert, uh, I believe that means that people who are renting, uh, a unit, if they're paying over time, they're building up equity in that situation, their living situation, so at some point they could possibly buy their unit at some point in the future. That's my understanding of it.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. My next question is around the, um, the idea of having a full-time affordable housing coordinator, and I'm just wondering, would it be possible, or have we explored the idea of sharing a position with innovative housing concepts? So versus partnering with other municipalities regionally, partnering with an organization that actually has a lot of existing expertise on affordable housing? And is that a conversation that we engaged yet or are potentially willing to engage?
We have, and thank you for the question. It's good. What, that's one of the things we put on the slide is other options is to, is to partner, excuse me, the first one, is to, uh, contract with a nonprofit agency. I should have mentioned that the assumption there is Englewood Housing Authority or Innovative Housing Concepts. And so we, I, I have had a conversation with Lindsay about this, about what would it look like, for instance, if you ran, if, if council sees fit to do an inclusionary zoning program, you know, could you operate that? And she said, yes, um, you know, that they could, um, be, you know, fill that service. And I think the same is true for, you know, affordable housing coordination. Again, if we wanted to more or less outsource that and have that as our kind of contract partner to, you know, do that work, we absolutely good.
Okay. I like the idea of exploring that conversation. I just, again, there's existing expertise, um, and sure of being able to find the right superstar to hire in-house that can ha, come with that knowledge. I, I'm not a fan of the, the idea of continuing to pay consultants to analyze and further analyze and further analyze. Either we hire the superstar who comes with the expertise, or we partner with someone who has that, so that we hit the ground running. Um, and then I guess my last question would be, um, does staff know of successes, I guess nationally, where there is a policy, um, to have an affordable does staff know of successes, I guess nationally, where there is a policy to have an affordable housing percentage requirement for new development or a fee-in-lue payment? Where policies like that exist, have we seen meaningful traction in actually creating affordable housing? I just, from what I've seen so far in my experience on council, I don't, I see a lot of developers opting for the fee-in-lue. Great that we can maybe add that into a fund somewhere, but then we haven't accomplished the goal of creating affordable housing. So are there success stories around that that we can resource to?
I think there's an increasingly large number of municipalities that are doing inclusionary housing requirements around the country, specifically in high-cost areas. So there are places in Colorado that have done it. Boulder's had it for a long time. Littleton's had their process for probably two or three years now. I think they set it about 5%. The thing about the fee-in-lue, though, is that it's not completely discountable in terms of not effective, because that would leverage additional funds that could be shared with partners like the housing authority to leverage their investment capacity. So even if the units aren't produced by a specific development, maybe they could be produced by preserving an existing naturally occurring affordable housing development through expending those funds that way. But I think a lot of cities on both coasts are now requiring the units to actually be built, because there's just so much you can do with the cash. You're not getting new units. A lot of that is preserving existing units, which is important, but you're not leveraging the new development relative to requiring the unit specifically. But I think an increasingly large number of municipalities are turning toward that tool as a way to leverage it. I mean, I think Sean could talk about Longmont's experience as well in terms of a Colorado example.
Okay. So I think part of what you just said is the kind of analysis that I need to get a little further in decision-making around this, in that if this is a recommended policy for us to adopt, it really should come in hand-in-hand with, you know, those partnerships that preserve existing affordable housing. So if you're not getting the great benefit over here and someone's paying fee-in-lue and we're putting it into a fund, then we also have that adjoining policy that says, and that money is going to go toward preserving what does exist, so that we've got, we're maintaining whatever affordable housing is here, even if we can't continue to effectively create it. So, thank you.
Member Noonan Kemp.
Thank you for the presentation. Very excited to see this at this point. I have a couple of questions on our approvals within community development. What is our turnaround currently for permitting and approvals?
Well, it depends on the project. It also depends on how many rounds of review that are required to be conducted. It's very rare that a project comes in, the application is made, all of the city departments say they're 100% compliant at the very start. That's, almost never happens. So there's at least one round where we say, these are our initial comments, please react to them. And sometimes for the more complicated projects, there could be multiple rounds of that. A large part of the time relative to our approval processes is really on the applicant side. Once they get our comments back to them, it's really incumbent on them to invest the time and money to come back with revisions. Sometimes that's very quickly, quickly done by their, on their part. Sometimes months go by. We have a project that's, years have literally gone by since we've heard, relative to their, their status of their project. So we endeavor to have a very cogent, you know, tight process that we can get through. But we do have applicant partners that we are dependent on relative to the quality and completeness of applications. Now, that being said, I think for, you know, a single-family home or a duplex, we're probably looking at no more than a couple of months at this point. For larger, more complicated projects, a PUD can take, a planned unit development can take nine months to 11 months, based on all of the public notice and other requirements that are built into that specific development review capacity. So again, I would stack up our review process against most, if not all, other metropolitan Denver communities of our size, relative to our efficiency and how we work with our applicants.
And thank you for that. And do we currently have any allowances in our review process that are specifically for affordable housing projects, whether that be the fast-track, which you mentioned is one of the things that's recommended, or waiving of fees or anything like that?
They are not differentiated now.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
So what is our target review time for first review and second review?
First review is usually within about 20 days. And then second review, again, would be roughly similar to that. They're pretty equal in terms of the time. And that's not just our department, that's an interdepartmental team that reviews all of the applications.
Member Ward.
I have a few questions. I'm just going to take them in the order that I wrote them down. We had some discussion about using McClellan Reservoir lease revenues for an affordable housing fund, which is not something that I necessarily disagree with. But that would, that would assume that there's going to be growth in the revenue of McClellan Reservoir leases. Do we have some idea of what is expected there over the course of the next year?
One of our board members for McClellan Reservoir EMRF is here, Director of Finance Kevin Ingles. But there is an escalator on all of those contracts, and the newer ones are more lucrative to us than the older ones. But Kevin?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Yes, there are escalators in each one. Most are tied to the CPI or inflation. We're budgeting, well, we haven't done 26 yet, but the difference between 25, 4, and 25 was about an extra $100,000 just because of the escalators.
But we're seeing the city exposed to inflation that's roughly that same amount. So we're using 100% of what comes from McClellan in the general fund right now. So to assume that we could use the difference absent a new lease would be kind of creative math. I guess my question is, are we expecting to, to sign some new leases in that area that might result in additional revenue that we don't currently have?
It's been a few months since we had a meeting, but there were two letter of intents that had been signed.
Okay.
So that would be additional.
Okay. And that would be the money that I would be willing to discuss pushing towards this just in general. But as far as what we're using in the general fund now, I think we need to keep that allocated towards what it's allocated towards, including however much it escalates. The next question I think is for Director Power, and it's in regards, we had some comments about ADUs in this report and potentially being able to use ADUs as a lever for additional affordable housing. And I did have a constituent contact me this week with a question about ADUs. Some of the code may make it difficult to develop an ADU. The example that was given to me was if you want to build a garage with an ADU on top of it, like a grandma house or something, the structure can't be taller than what your house currently is. And my question for you, specific to your job, is are we seeing ADU permits come in and we're having to deny them because they don't fit the development standards? Or what kind of ADU activity are we looking at to date?
I would say that we have a steady, but not overwhelming, stream of ADU applications. We actually are seeing a lot of pre-application meetings with people who are interested in developing an ADU, either within their existing house or on their lot, because there are more opportunities now. But one of the, one of the challenges with ADUs, like all other types of development, is they're not inexpensive to build in this, in this environment with both materials and labor. You know, you're looking probably at a minimum of $150,000 to $200,000 in this environment for an ADU investment. So that people are, you know, being very careful around that. But I'd say, since the new code was adopted, we're probably seeing two to three a month that are coming in. And I think that's pretty relatively similar to other cities of our size that have permitted ADUs. One of the questions around affordability of ADUs is, do we waive fees for those types of things? One of the things I failed to mention, and I apologize in my lineup, is one of the things that we've talked about is developing a pre-approved plan for ADU units, so that that is more streamlined for the applicant. A lot of the times, these folks are homeowners. They don't necessarily need to go and hire an architect. They can go straight to their contractor. And those are something that, again, with our work plan going forward, we'd like to build that in, so that we could develop that prototype for the average lot in Inglewood, so that people can, they could vary it a little bit, but the fundamentals would be there for them to be able to go forward.
And that two to three number you just gave, is that permits issued, or is that just inquiries on the, on the process and initial applications?
I'd say per month, we're doing one to two permits per month.
Okay.
But again, I think if, you know, the interest rate environment and the context for labor costs and building materials, you know, we're looking at a snapshot in time now. The code is built for a generation. So obviously, we expect that that type of activity would, would pick up with different economic conditions in the future.
Okay. And we talked a little bit about, or I heard you talk a little bit about getting with developers and, and people that are in the industry. Have we met with or approached any trade groups? The three that I can think of offhand are the Home Builders Association, the Apartment Association, and the Realtors Association. All three of those have people that they have hired to engage with government, public policy people. I think those might be good resources for us to tap into and talk to them about what they're seeing in our area and specifically in our city.
Yeah, I agree with that analysis 100%. We did tap some of those groups during the formation of our new code, but now that it's in place, it would make a lot of sense to reconnect with them and provide an education process of exactly what is now permitted.
Yeah, if any of them were willing, I'd actually be somewhat interested in seeing them in a study session potentially. I think this body could benefit from some of that expertise. The next question I have is in regards to construction defect reform. And I remember probably about a year ago, we brought this up as far as local legislation on construction defect reform was concerned. And I thought the answer was that it was something that we could do, but I don't know that we actually had any follow-through on that. City Attorney, do you recall where we landed on, on the subject of sort of preempting on a local level, the construction defect law to ensure that perhaps we could have some projects that wouldn't otherwise happen here?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall where we landed on that, but I will review my notes and get back to you.
Okay, that'd be good. And then I have a couple of suggestions relative to short-term rentals. One of the things that I have gotten as feedback from some of my constituents is that they're concerned that the short-term rental market is actually disrupting the affordable housing market. And on a, on a city level, I can sort of see that happening in a city our size to a certain extent. I know that we don't have a ton of short-term rentals in our town. One of the things that I might suggest as something that we could talk about would be a potential special tax for short-term rentals. Obviously, this would have to go to the voters, but it would be a tax that we could potentially dedicate to an affordable housing fund to offset some of the, some of the challenges associated with having short-term rentals instead of housing stock that people could buy. The last thing would be similar, on a similar note, a dedication of any fines that short-term rentals pay when they're unlicensed or they're not complying with license regulations from enhanced enforcement into a similar affordable housing fund. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ward. Member Wright?
Thank you. I had a couple more questions, please. How much is the typical in-lue fee?
I'm not aware of a specific one. I think it varies by community. We'd have to research that additionally, relative to the amount they pay per unit. I think there's a very broad range, depending on the municipality.
Okay. Well, and I believe the MCO PUD was around $500,000, if I believe correctly?
Well, that wasn't for affordable housing. That was for some of the other associated impacts relative to that project.
Okay, so it would be by project that they would pay?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
The way impact fees usually work for affordable housing is per unit, in that there's an assessed fee that would be per unit.
And it would depend on the size or the area, or what are the parameters, I guess, that you would look at to assess that fee?
Well, again, this is ranging a little bit beyond my area of expertise. I think this is one of the things that we would task Root or a similar group to look at, relative to how Inglewood would be, maintain its competitive position in the market, to not essentially shut down the housing market, but also be, where does that fee need to be to keep the production where it needs to be in terms of reaching affordable housing goals without completely surpassing the market?
So do we know how many cities charge this fee?
I don't know specifically in the metro area, but I think it's a growing number.
I'd say it's about a dozen. And for instance, in Longmont, it's $6 per finished square foot, or thereabouts, for rental, and about $14 per square foot for, for sale properties. So it can be a pretty hefty fee. If you have, you know, a 300-unit apartment complex that comes online, you know, you take that square footage, multiply by, you know, $5.93, and that's the fee that they need to pay.
Okay. And then some of these other fees and taxes, I'm curious about the rental licensing fee. I know Denver does. I know multiple people that have had owned apartment complexes that they did affordable housing. And because of the fees that they are charged now, they have sold those complexes. And that's a concern for me. Do we know, do we have a number in mind that if this is something that you chooses to do, what that fee may be?
I don't think there's a specific number. Again, that would require the analysis.
Okay.
There was some pretty healthy discussion at the, at the task force about rental licensing fees and inspections and that type of thing. So I do think there was some, some debate, not unanimity around that in the, in the task force itself.
So, so the taxes and fees on these affordable housing funds, it would be something that further discussion. So if I went line by line on these, we wouldn't really have a number on it. It would be something that had to be discussed. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any further questions before we move to recommendations or areas we want to prioritize? All right, anybody want to jump in with their suggestions? Go ahead, Member Noonan Kemp.
You know, going all the way back to the beginning of this conversation, where Member Russell said, you know, what do we want to do? Something that's been in my mind since Code Next, and then obviously throughout being the liaison to the task force, is going all the way back to the original recommendations from the Root Policy Report to us. And so many of the things that are in these recommendations from the task force were also in the Root Report, which is really exciting to see progress. But the very first one was to adopt a local affordable housing goal. What is our goal for this? And there's definitely a goal in the report. I think there's a question for me on if this council wants to also set numeric goals, or that we want to close the gaps that the report identified. And so I do think we need some strategy and some structure, a plan where all of these different priorities and actions get tied together into one thing. I also don't think that we can ask the staff to do that with the current capacity, and I think we need to give them some direction. So I would be happy to see us move forward and work through this list. I'm happy to start. It would be no surprise, I support most of these. But I do think unto what is still a question that we should answer, and into a plan that can outlive this council and to serve many years for the city. So that is something that I hope if we are able to make a hire and secure some funding, that we can give staff the direction to do. So that's kind of the big picture that I will start with. Jumping in, Mayor, do you want to just work through one by one?
Yeah, however you see fit. So I was just going to highlight a few that I think are the most important, but you go about it the way that you prefer.
I don't want to be here all night, so I will just say, the most critical things in my mind are, we have to secure funding. It's the number one thing that every single person will tell you to do. And so I definitely think we need to move forward with that. And I think that we need to move forward in this year's budget to add the coordinator position. There is so much work to be done, and I think we need someone to find all the funding opportunities to help organize some of these public information campaigns. Getting the right person in place, I think, will unlock many of these other pieces. And since we're heading into our budget cycle soon, I think that makes a lot of good sense for us. I strongly support the additional leases and EMRF going to this. I'm open to the Housing Advisory Board, but again, I would... to the Housing Advisory Board, but again, I would punt that a little further down the road once we make the hire and let them establish it. I think community education is really important. That was another one of our recommendations from Root actually was to raise awareness about regional housing opportunities and regional, um, housing assistance. It doesn't necessarily have to be just in Inglewood. What are our partners doing? What's the county doing? Um, let me just look through quickly. Um, as far as the fund is concerned, again, I think I've addressed that. We'll start with the EMERF. Um, and I do would like to see us, uh, and look at the linkage fee. That was something when we were in the task force that came up that I think is a real no-brainer. It's basically how Denver is funding almost all of their affordable housing right now, is they have linkage fees and they're, uh, one of their staff members came and spoke to the task force. And when I, the night actually that the Affordable Housing Task Force presented to council, I was talking to the Habitat rep and his project in Baker here in Inglewood is on hold. And I said, "Well, why are you on hold? There isn't anything with our review." And he said, "No, no, no, no. Your staff's been great." He said, "We don't have the cash." And he said, "If I were across the street in Denver, I'd have access to $2 million in funding from the city." And we just don't have that here. And so the things that we can do to make that possible, and they're paying for it through linkage fees, I think we should be looking into that as well. Um, I'll try to be quick here. I think that we should look at the development opportunities that we have. Obviously, we did a lot of work in Code Next, a lot of the work and a lot of the recommendations that the task force shared with us are the things that we discussed in Code Next that we couldn't get a majority to support. And I wonder if there's an opportunity to revisit some of these opportunities specifically around the idea of this cottage zoning. Member Ward and I went and saw an example of a lot in Denver where they can do this. And what I like about this is that it reduces the incentive to scrape old small homes. It actually incentivizes us to keep old homes, but you're actually, you're able to divide the lot. So you can add other small-scale homes to a lot instead of scraping it and building one big mansion. It would be such a good fit for a city like Inglewood. It would meet the needs of our community, increasing our ability to have small starter homes, which we don't have right now, and increasing homeownership. So I'm really interested in that opportunity. I think it'd meet a lot of our needs and I'd like to see us, um, look into that. Um, one thing too on inclusionary zoning, which is something that I have mixed feelings about, but I think that something that Longmont is doing that's actually really interesting is you can say, "We only want the fee to apply to maybe like large-scale apartment developments that are not serving the needs that we actually think we need in our community." And small-scale developments or developments under a certain AMI, they would be waived. And so I think some of those things that we're not actually passing on development fees to the renters who actually need the affordable housing is something that's the most interesting to me. And again, I don't think we have to make a decision on inclusionary zoning tonight. I think we need to say, "Are we open to having more research? We need more assessment. We need more understanding." And I think that's what we would be saying yes to, um, with the staff. I think those are most of the things that I wanted to speak to in this. As you can tell, very broadly supportive. Um, but I really think that the first thing we do is we figure out the staffing and the funding and everything else comes after that. But I would like to see most of these recommendations in, um, a coordinated kind of strategic plan when it comes to housing in the city. I'm sure I forgot something that I'll have to weigh in on later, but those are my high-level thoughts.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Member Ward?
I have a few thoughts. Uh, I'll start with the action items that I saw tonight and perhaps some that I came up with on my own that I, I would like to see going forward. Uh, the analysis of corporate ownership of our housing stock is actually very interesting to me. Um, if we're talking about the ability to acquire or invest in a house for individuals who are currently renting or otherwise unhoused or not in housing that they own, I think that's a, a pretty good place to start. If we want to pull that lever, I think we can look from, from the point when we have the data as, at how we want to handle that, whether it's a, a, an investment property tax or a, uh, rental management fee or something along those lines. Uh, that discussion would be further down the road, but until we know where we are, I think we're missing an important chunk of data. Uh, the next would be, uh, the one that I brought up earlier, construction defect reform. I was very interested, Director Power, when you talked about some sort of pre-made designs for ADUs. I think that would be beneficial in a number of ways. First of all, it would, it would lead to a less, how do I put this? The, the design, if the city came up with a design that was readily available, it would not necessarily be guaranteed, but it would be more likely to fit in with the surrounding property design as opposed to being something that just is totally unique and doesn't necessarily fit in with the neighborhood. So I wouldn't mind seeing that pursued. Uh, I am more interested in a Housing Advisory Board citizen group than I am in hiring a full-time bureaucrat at this time to handle it. I understand why we want to do that, but until we have a funding stream that we are confident we can tap into and would, would last, I'm not sure that I'm prepared to make that investment at, at the current time. And then I'll go through some things that did give me a little heartburn as we entered this discussion. Uh, the talk about expanding apartments into zoning areas where they're not currently allowed. It really screamed R1 to me. I looked at our zoning code and I think the two districts where that, that's not currently allowed right now are the industrial zones and the R1 districts. My constituents have spoken very loudly to me about their feelings on expanding multifamily in R1. And even the courtyard designs that we currently have are troubling to some of them, although I think that, as Member Noonan Camp alluded to or stated, is less disruptive than a regular-sized apartment building would be if we, if we cleared three or four houses and built 15 apartment units, for example. Um, I've said this before, I'll just keep it brief because I've said it before, but I generally oppose any fee that masquerades or any tax that masquerades as a fee. Uh, so when we start talking about fees, I think we need to be very careful. And I want to be very careful because unless the fee provides a very direct relation to the activity being done, it is, in my opinion, a taper violation. I recognize that there's case law that differentiates and deviates from that, but that's, that's my philosophical, personal belief. And some of the fees that we have already passed are troubling to me, although I lost that political battle, so I won't belabor it any further. Um, and then the, the last thing I want to point out, I did enjoy hearing Member Noonan Camp's comments, but I always get a little nervous when we compare the opportunity that we have here in Inglewood to anything that is happening in Denver. Uh, I just briefly looked, our general fund this year is somewhere in the neighborhood of 75 to 80 million dollars. Denver's is almost 1.8 billion dollars. So if you just did the basic math and you compared Inglewood's budget as a percentage of Denver's, that $2 million that's available in Denver would be about $100,000 here. Um, so I'm not sure that we can physically do what's being done in Denver. Um, as much as I would like to see that Habitat have some opportunities here, and I want to see that Habitat development happen. I think Habitat has been good for the cities where it has operated. Um, I'm just not sure that the Denver comparison is, is really, um, the best or accurate or even relevant to what we're trying to do here. So that's, it's illustrative. Yes, it is. Sort of. Um, all right. Uh, that's everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ward. Member Wright?
Thank you. Um, to start off, I was at Dr. Cox this last week, and the board voted to support, I believe it is 251272, which is a construction defect, defects and middle housing. Um, Colorado Assembly is working on it. It was progressing and it was unanimous, um, vote with Dr. Cox. So, um, that is good. For the first time, it is making progress. Hopefully, it won't die as it usually does, but it sounds, let's cross our fingers and our toes. Um, one of, one of the things that I don't think anybody's addressed, um, I've read a couple of articles. I have a couple, um, things that just came out, is that Kyle Clark from Nine News reported recently, Denver has a 30% vacancy rate and it is growing. Um, also Zillow has reported that in the end of February, out of 11 major cities, Denver is reporting the highest rental rate drops of 11 major cities. Now, that ends up being the metro Denver area. And it is dropping every single month because people are leaving our area. Why? Because it's too expensive to live here. And when those rates are dropping, when people are leaving, the rental rates start dropping. It becomes more affordable because you have an overstock. Um, when it comes to commercial rental rates, they have dropped 34% also. So the market is shifting. Um, the market adjusts itself quite often. I, I also, so I think we need to look at that. And I almost, not going to be popular for saying this, but I think we need to take a pause for a few months and see what happens. A lot of people are saying we're going to recession. And I think something's going to change with that and things are going to become very affordable. I think that, um, things are going to change. I agree with Member Ward when he said that he doesn't approve of fees, that they are hidden taxes. Could not agree with him more. I, I do believe that, I don't like the idea of bringing somebody else on where we don't know how long we're going to be able to pay for them. I don't like the thought of somebody losing their job, that we're bringing them on and saying, "In a year or two, I'm sorry, we can't afford you." Especially if our rentals rates are going down, we have all kinds of vacancies and signs are going up saying three months free of rent. And if you drive down Bellevue right now, you're seeing it on some of those apartments. And it's starting to happen. And I think we need to look at that. I think there needs to be a pause for a couple of months and we see what the market's going to do on this. I, I think we need to look at that. And I also think that Member Prank had some really good questions, and we need to get the information on that before we move forward also. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wright. Member Prank?
Thank you. Um, I don't think I'm going to go too deep into each of the sections, but try to keep it pretty broad. Um, I, I actually am in favor of looking at options to hire a coordinator to do this work in this analysis. I'm not in favor of, uh, hiring consultants or consulting to analyze reports that have already been produced. I think between a hire of a coordinator and asking our staff to dig a little deeper and, and educate themselves more around this issue, were we to be in a situation to not be able to continue funding a housing coordinator, um, perhaps could be a, a good idea. Um, and, and I think to address what Member Wright just said about, um, not being able to maintain a position, I think that I wouldn't have a problem with advertising the position as potentially time-limited at the outset. So you advertise it as such, a person coming into the, the position is fully aware of what they're getting into. And then, um, I would also very much support the innovative housing concept conversation in partnering with experts, um, so that we could get more bang for the buck. Um, I, I'm, I'm okay with the idea of the advisory board. Um, and I think the advisory board in conjunction with a coordinator could help maybe take some of these steps that we're not obviously wholly on board with pursuing right in this moment and start prioritizing them for us. So, um, I would like to see the coordinator come in and focus and help set up an advisory group that can say, "Let's look at funding first and, and getting that solid and analyzed and, and established so that we can actually do something moving forward." Um, I, I don't have a huge issue with the preserving what exists section of the recommendations. I could get behind most of those. Um, but I do think we need some more analysis. I think it should not be consulted out. It should happen in-house. Um, and mostly, I think that this council needs to make a decision, similar to what, what Member Noonan Camp suggested. We need a goal. I, I don't get a sense that this council is, um, fully supportive of actually doing affordable housing. And so can we get to a goal that is then, obviously, I don't want to put money and time and effort into, to, you know, more community outreach unless we have a goal that we're working toward. And we're all in agreement on that and, and moving in the same direction. So first and foremost, I agree, that has to come, um, before we can really get anywhere with any of these other pieces. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Member Prank. Uh, Member Noonan Camp, before I get to you, I'll chime in and then Member Russell, I'll, I'll pass it to you. But there were two areas that I wanted to highlight. Um, the, the funding options to me was the highest priority for me. Um, I like the idea of the EMERF leases, um, uh, to, to fund the Affordable Housing Fund. Uh, Member Ward, you read my mind regarding kind of the lodging tax or increasing the, or going to the voters to increase the lodging tax specifically for STRS to fund affordable housing. That's another area that I would like to see us potentially look into a little bit further. Um, you know, the, I, I expect many developers to pay the fee in lieu. I think we kind of got the hint that that's potentially, uh, what may happen with a, a PUD that we recently, uh, approved, but, um, I, I just get the sense that that's going to be the, the way for, for many of the developments that we approve if we decide to go down that route. But, um, it is what it is. Uh, and with that, I would like to, um, really look at the full-time housing coordinator. I like the idea that Member Prank brought up about, um, the Inglewood Housing Authority kind of leveraging their expertise regarding that. Regardless, I do think that there's an importance with having a housing coordinator that does quarterback the entire, uh, plan. Um, and to Member Prank's point, uh, yes, we got to come to an agreement as a council about what our goals are, what we want to do with affordable housing. I know that that's going to be part of the discussions that we have moving forward. But those are the two areas that I really saw that we wanted, that, that I felt were the most important. Uh, the advisory board, I don't think that it's as important, but if members of council do want to do that, uh, from the get-go, we can do that. But I think that that is more down the line. I wanted to speak to one other. Oh, and then the preserve existing affordable housing. Um, really keen on that, uh, Inglewood Housing Authority and the private activity bonds. Uh, but yeah, any of those aspects of it, I, I would be behind as well. Um, I think that's it for me regarding those pieces, but generally on board with most of what was on the, within the package itself, but those were the two high priority for me. Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you, and I thank you for the discussion. Um, the, the one thing that in the discussion here that I really could get on board with is Habitat for Humanity. Habitat for Humanity has built some homes over, um, on the Hill. And, um, they've been, there were duplexes. They were very workable. And I think that that's one thing that, that we ought to be working on to get that done. I agree with Councilmember Noonan Camp. I think that this, um, this council needs to set a goal. Um, but I can guarantee you, I am 100% on board with Councilmember Wright. I believe that housing is going to become so affordable that, oh, this is going to be a pointless discussion. I have been around long enough that the housing market goes up and the housing market goes down. And probably, we haven't seen even where it's at right now. And people say that housing is not affordable. There's only seven and a half percent interest right now. In the 1980s, the interest rate was 18% on homes. People would buy them and be stuck with them because they got transferred in the military and couldn't get rid of them for 15 years. Um, we're about to the other side of that cycle right now, and housing will become affordable. And I think that some of these things that we're talking about, it, it's going to be a waste of time. Government cannot create affordable housing. Government can subsidize affordable housing and, uh, tax people in order to do that, but we cannot create it. And the more government gets involved, the more difficult, um, that it is. And I mean, all these, there are two things that I am definitely opposed to, overriding the Code Next that we spent over a year working on. Overriding the code next that we spent over a year working on, fighting with the constituents. And now we're going to go back and look to see if we could redo some of the stuff they were fighting against already a couple of years ago. I'm opposed to that. Um, the other thing is, Member Ward, I, um, the ADUs, it's a good idea to get people to build that. But even at $150,000, um, or $200,000 to build an ADU, do you have any idea what the rent would be just to recover the cost in that? The rent would be probably at least $2,000 a month, if not more. And that is not affordable for the average person. I, I think that one thing I don't want to see staff have to do is spend time doing things that only three people on the council decide they want to move forward with. And I think unless we get a goal that we all want to look at and then we choose which things will work to fit in that goal, I think it's a, it's not, it's not right to expect staff to spend time on that. So I think perhaps that, um, and I don't know that we should do it tonight. Staff go back and look at what we've got and then have another study session to address some of these things.
Thank you, Member Russell.
Thank you.
Uh, Member Noonan Camp.
Sure, just a couple of things. Um, and to be clear, I think we need a plan. I think we need a goal, but I don't want us to not do anything while we're working on that. I think having someone, especially on staff, who can help drive that process forward is going to be really important. A question I had is how long are the EMERF leases? The new one that we're looking at?
The director's coming up.
It's okay, 20 plus is.
20 to 30, I think.
Sorry about that. Uh, most are original term of 20, but they have, um, renewal options. So most of them spread out at least 60 years.
And are you, does that apply to the ones we're currently using in general fund as well as the new ones we're looking at for this?
Uh, the new ones, I don't know. Those terms wouldn't have been, uh, decided yet. I think it's still in the LOI process. But yeah, most of the current ones are that structure.
But we would anticipate them to be similar as, or we're not sure?
Most likely, most, uh, businesses that want, excuse me, that want to, uh, construct, um, buildings and things want it to be a long-term lease.
Um, that's helpful because I think that answers some of the question around stability for funding for the program, for the staff member, if we have those long-term leases that, and we have that dedicated for this purpose. I feel, uh, confident in that funding source and it not taking away from the general fund. Um, a couple of other points from the presentation. I would be interested in revisiting the first right of refusal conversation as well. So especially we're talking about allocating that authority to the housing authorities. So I would definitely like to see that come back. Um, as far as fast-tracking approvals for affordable housing, um, I know we're already very quick. Um, San Diego, I know that they, they guarantee less than 30 days for any project under 120% AMI. I think that's an interesting idea to say, under a certain AMI, we will guarantee a certain fast track. Again, as it is up to us, not up to the applicant. Um, and I also wonder if there's an automatic waiving of permitting fees for projects under a certain AMI as well. I think that's something that I would like to see us look into. Um, just one note on the Denver vacancy rate that Member Wright brought up. The rental apartment rate in Denver is around 8%. The commercial rate in downtown is around 30%. So that's, the, yeah, the commercial rate's 30, the apartment rate is 8%. So those are very different numbers. Um, but I also think that's why we need to, in Inglewood, market ourselves to a certain kind of small developer who wants to have small projects that are focused on neighborhood-sized developments that fit our character and that are building to the AMI that we're interested in. A lot of the vacancies that we're seeing in Denver and the really massive buildings, a lot of the things that are, uh, done in Inglewood either by a PUD or by Wright is, uh, where we're seeing, because they're luxury apartments and they're expensive. We need to work with developers who are building at a more affordable, missing middle income rate. Um, and Member Wright, I, I think you're right in the sense of we're not building this, but government, the role we play is we create the environment in which development happens or doesn't. And it is very much within our hands to say, either Inglewood is a place where you can build affordable housing, where Habitat can build their projects, or a place where they can't. And we had an affordable housing rep on the task force. And right now it's not the best place for them to build houses. Um, and so if we want those nonprofit partners, there are really practical, specific, actionable things we can do to empower our nonprofit partners. Obviously Denver has tons of resources. We don't, Member Ward, I'm not implying that we're the same as them, but there are some very basic tools that we, uh, we have an empty toolbox right now. And I think we can fill it with some really practical things. So I don't think we're going to agree on anything. I'm not Pollyanna enough to believe that. But I think to do nothing and say that the market will just take care of it, I don't think serves our constituents. I think we're in a very different place than we were. We've been digging ourselves into, uh, a hole since the housing crisis. And I don't think waiting it out is, is an option. Um, so I hope that we take real action on this.
Member Prank, did you have something else or your light's on? No. And City Attorney Niles, was there anything to add? I saw your light on and now it's off, but.
Uh, I was going to weigh in on the term of the EMERF leases. They all have a base initial term of less than 20 years because Inglewood City Charter prohibits leases of more than 20 years without voter approval. So, um, the base terms are no more than 20. They, if, if there's new construction involved, usually they do allow for some extension terms. Um, we did ask EMERFs outside council to confirm this is charter compliant. He confirmed that it is because the extension terms are optional.
Mayor, if I could add on that, the, just for comments I'm hearing from the public, the, just to explain, the, at the end of this 20-year period, the land doesn't go to the private sector. They have to renew that lease if they want to keep operating the car dealership or the apartment complex. And those escalate rapidly at that point because we have a, a better, we'll, we'll have a better contract in the future. The ones we're using now have a much better escalator clause. And so as those are coming, you know, due now, some of them are coming due, you know, in the next five to 10 years, those will be, you know, increased pretty significantly because they've had that low escalator that these, that the old leases had. So those will, those will go up quite a bit. And again, we're not, we're not caught, staff isn't suggesting that we have kind of a blanket percentage of all the revenue out there. Keep the revenue we have, use the two leases that we have coming, um, that we've already got letters of intent on that, which I think is, which is multifamily buildings that are being built out there. Dedicate that revenue or some portion of it, um, which should be in the, you know, area of 800,000 to a million dollars a year in new revenue for the city that we're not currently getting.
Right, yeah. And that's kind of where I want to sit as well with the two LOIs that we have, um, coming up. So, all right, uh, Member Russell, go ahead.
Um, so the letters of intent, it actually has to come to council when we get ready to enter into the lease itself.
Correct.
Correct. And I mean, from, I've been on council for quite a while and there's been several projects that come up. When a company comes out there, and most of that has been vacant land to build on the land, they don't want to build something on a 20-year lease. But we can't make a lease longer than 20 years. So we generally, um, give them a right to renew, um, several times so that they would be encouraged to build there. Um, so anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right. Brad, Tim and Sean, thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, I hope that gave you plenty of direction on this item. So I'm sure we'll be talking about it here soon as well. So, all right, thank you, everyone. We'll take a 10-minute break at 7:55. We'll be back at 8:05 to continue the discussion on the election of mayor. Thank you. Members of council, if you could please be seated. All right, members of council, if you could please be seated. All right, everyone, we are now back. It is 8:06. Uh, up next, the city clerk Stephanie Carlisle and city attorney Tamara Niles here to provide an overview of the election systems for the election of mayor. Good evening, Stephanie.
Good evening.
And Mayor, actually, I'm going to do the first two slides and the last slide. So we are going to, to do this together.
Sounds great.
Uh, first, a little bit of background for, for people that may be watching. I know council is already familiar. November 2024, Inglewood Charter was amended to allow for a directly elected mayor. Currently, our mayor is chosen from, uh, a city council member and, um, by city council. But in November 2025 election, um, the mayor will be directly elected by our voters, directly chosen by our voters. Um, and this was a charter initiative, uh, ballot question. And, uh, it dictated that the mayor position will replace the at-large council member position whose term expires this year. And that, of course, is the position held by, uh, Councilmember Wright. The parameters of the direct-elect mayor position, the term will be four years. By Colorado Constitution, the term limit is two years. So the same person can be elected twice to this position. Anyone that has been a council member, that term does not count because a council member position and the mayor position are two separate positions. So someone could serve three terms as a council member and potentially then two terms as the mayor. The role of our mayor will be unchanged, just as Mayor Sierra. They will chair the meetings, sign our contracts, and act as mayor for ceremonial purposes.
So we talked a little bit about this last summer. But staff was asked to explore election voting options that would ensure the directly elected mayor received more than fifty percent of the votes. The city's current plurality system of elections does not require a majority of votes. That's simply the highest number of votes. Council, we're going to present some options and may consider implementing several election structures, including but not limited to runoff elections, ranked choice voting, and primary elections. For runoff election, if no mayoral candidate receives a majority of the votes in the municipal election in November, Inglewood, City of Inglewood could hold a runoff election with the top two candidates. And this is, again, if there are multiple candidates and there is not somebody that comes out with a majority of the votes. Per city charter, this would be a special election, and a runoff election cannot occur prior to December nineteenth and would likely occur mid-January. The winning candidate would then take office in February of twenty twenty six. A runoff election would ensure that the mayor receives more than fifty percent of the vote. We had several meetings with the deputy director of elections at Arapahoe County, who did inform us that because of the proximity to the twenty twenty five general election, county staff would not be able to conduct that runoff election for this city. A runoff election would cost approximately a hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And other municipalities that have runoff elections are Denver, Colorado Springs, Pueblo, and Brighton. Next, we're going to touch on ranked choice voting. Ranked choice voting allows voters to rank candidates. And if no candidate receives more than fifty percent of the vote, elimination rounds occur until one candidate surpasses the fifty percent threshold. Arapahoe County is certified and can support ranked choice voting. That would incur additional costs, primarily for licensing, separate testing, and then a very robust education and outreach campaign. The estimated cost that we received from Arapahoe County would be approximately seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars to implement ranked choice voting. But that could be substantially higher if there are no county-wide or statewide ballot measures. The biggest piece of ranked choice voting would be the community outreach campaign and the education that would be necessary and required. And we would need to begin that immediately. Arapahoe County would need notice at least a hundred and eighty days prior, which is May eighth, but certainly the sooner the better. Other municipalities that we talked to have had, you know, a couple of years to prepare for ranked choice voting. And I think that it's just, we just really would need to get on this option. City of Inglewood would be the first municipality in Arapahoe County to implement ranked choice voting. Some of the other towns or cities that have ranked choice voting, City of Boulder, they had a citizen initiative and their first election with ranked choice voting was in twenty twenty-three, which they told us was highly successful. City and county of Broomfield did have an election to amend their code for mayor and council members for ranked choice voting.
Excuse me one second, Stephanie. Members of the public, if you could just keep it down, we could get some of the feedback within the microphones, so. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Yeah, sure. So they did not have an election that had multiple candidates, so they had not had an election to date. And then their council did decide to postpone their implementation to a twenty twenty-seven date for ranked choice voting. So City and County of Broomfield has not had an election with ranked choice voting as of now. City of Fort Collins, they had a charter amendment in twenty twenty-two for mayor and council members. They are currently preparing for their first ranked choice voting election, which will be this year, November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Town of Telluride did have a citizens' initiative in two thousand and eight that was for three mayoral elections. They did have ranked choice voting, and after the twelve years, they no longer utilize ranked choice voting. They just reported that it was very costly and time-intensive. They're certainly a small town and had limited resources. Town or City of Aspen, they had voters approved ranked choice voting in two thousand and seven, and then they repealed it in twenty-ten. Carbondale adopted ranked choice voting in two thousand and two, but to date has not had an election with ranked choice voting. And then the Town of Basalt also adopted this into their charter in two thousand and two. And their first election, where, again, they're a small town, they don't typically have multiple candidates, their first election with ranked choice voting was in twenty-twenty. The last option we wanted to kind of preview would be municipal primary election. This would ensure that the mayor receives more than fifty percent of the vote in the general election by narrowing the pool to two candidates prior to the general election. Arapahoe County did indicate that this is something that they could conduct for the city on the city's behalf. Candidates for the mayor position would need to submit nomination. So the thing with the primary election is you have to back it up several months. And so for this option, you know, candidates would need to circulate nomination petitions in May so that if there were multiple candidates, then we would know to have a primary election that would then take the top two over to the November election. This option would cost approximately eighty-five thousand. And the latest date for a primary election statutorily is August fifth of twenty twenty-five. And currently, there are no other municipalities in Colorado that conduct primary elections.
City council has multiple options if they wish to proceed. And of course, all of these are optional. The city is not required to act, but it can. So there are three ways city council could implement these options. Through a regular ordinance, we could amend municipal code. We can do this because charter doesn't prohibit it. And just to ensure that I had this correct, my legal analysis was correct, I did reach out to an elections expert to review our charter and our code and make sure that's perfectly fine. And he confirmed that, yes, city council could adopt a regular ordinance to implement any one of these. Second, city council could send one or more of these options to the voters in a special election. If we were going to do that and won it for the November election, we would need to also move quite quickly. And then we would ask the voters whether they wish to adopt one or more of the options. Then we could also consider putting a ballot question on the November general election. But to be applicable to the November election, the only option we could do that for is the post-election runoff election. Because that's the one that if no person received more than fifty percent of the vote in November, then we would send a second ballot to the voters with just the top two candidates on it. So there are some reasons you may not want to consider that, given the timing and how people run their races leading up to the November general election, but it is a legal option for you to consider.
All right, city clerk and city attorney, thank you very much for the presentation. Member Wright, you have the first question.
Could there be a fourth option? We do nothing and run our elections like we do now?
Yes, all of these are just options, and you don't have to do anything. If we do nothing, it will be a plurality election result. So whoever gets the highest number of votes, no matter what the percentage is, that's who would be elected.
And do you know how many elected mayor or council cities do a plurality election?
I do not. That's not something I looked at, but I'm assuming it's the majority.
The majority. Okay, thank you.
Member Noonan Camp.
Since the citizens voted for direct election of the mayor, I think it's important that we think about, since this is the first time we're doing this in our city, how do we do it well? And having a majority winner, I think, is really, really important. Having someone who, what I expect might be a crowded field, where we could end up with someone having a very small percentage of the total support of the overall city, maybe something like twenty or thirty percent, being the mayor is concerning to me. I really think that majority support is really important as we think about the future of the community. So I appreciate these options. I think the most efficient is one election, which is the instant runoff option, also known as ranked choice voting. But I am not comfortable personally making that decision as a council. I would be fine referring that question to the voters to see if they are interested in voting that way. But I'm not comfortable making that unilateral decision. So out of these three options, I would support a traditional runoff because if someone does get fifty percent of the vote and the majority of our constituents and neighbors feel really confident in one individual, then we don't have to pay for the second election. The primary forces us into that second election, whether we need it or not. And I think it accelerates the timeline in a way that doesn't make sense. So for the twenty twenty-five election, I would support the traditional runoff. But maintaining that if we wanted to refer something to the ballot for the voters on an instant runoff, would support that as well.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Actually, I just have a question for you, Stephanie. When you reached out to Arapahoe County regarding the runoff election and them refusing just because it's too close to the general election, was that a hard no or were they just saying that?
It was a hard no. I went back to them to ask if, you know, because originally when we talked about, you know, runoff election within thirty days, you know, it was a hard no. And then when we talked about, you know, having time to prepare the election, the holiday season to consider, and with our charter not allowing us to do it any, you know, not prior to December nineteenth, I went back to them to say, you know, would a mid-January still work? And the answer was still, they have, you know, they shut down their data, they're wrapping up their certifications. And they did say that that was a hard no for them.
Okay.
I did reach out to the election administrator that ran our recall elections last year. They would be available for a mid-January election.
Thank you. Anyone else want to chime in? Go ahead, Member Russell.
I would just like to say that the election last year for the mayor position passed by eighty-three percent of the public. It was a mandate to this city that the citizens want to elect the mayor. The constituents in this city are pretty sharp. They know what the laws are, what the rules are. Littleton elected their first mayor four years ago. And they had three candidates. The mayor actually won by, I want to say, just over forty-eight percent. The other two candidates were right around thirty percent. There was no problem. Elections with a plurality of vote, when it is very close, automatic recounts are automatically installed. We've always had this this way in Inglewood. I don't know why we would consider changing it. If we're considering changing it, why are we only doing it for the mayor position? The mayor is no different. There's nothing different in our charter about this. The only difference is that the citizens are electing the mayor. The mayor still is a member of the council, only is ceremonial head, signs the paperwork, and is still a member of the council. I think that if we're going to do this, we need to do it for everybody, not just for the mayor. And I don't think Inglewood has for decades run by a plurality of elections, and there's not a problem. The people in Inglewood didn't have a problem. The person won. Even if a person wins by one vote, if they've won and there's been a recount, they've won. So I don't see a problem myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Member Wright, did you have something else to add? Go ahead.
Thank you. If we change something by ordinance, what is the timing if the voters want to take action? Is there time for a referendum?
Yes, there would be time for a referendum. So by our charter, we have two readings on an ordinance. And then there's a thirty-day period from publication of second reading until it goes into effect. So citizens have that time period to be able to circulate a referendum petition and submit it. Upon receipt of a referendum petition, council has two options. It could either, a valid referendum petition. City council could either repeal the ordinance or set up for a special election.
And how long would they have to? I don't know where for. It's a thirty-day, sixty-day for signatures or?
It's thirty days.
Okay. All week and long, I was receiving calls about this. People are upset, and I hope council realizes that. One of the things that I was told, and this is a quote, when eighty-three-plus percent of the voters voted to directly elect the mayor, they didn't vote to change the way we currently elect our council, including the mayor. And I think that this council needs to think about that because it's a very true statement. Eighty-three-plus percent of our constituents were not voting to change the way we vote our mayor. So, and I was looking into a lot of things. Member Russell said it, and I have it written down. Littleton went to direct-elect mayor in twenty twenty, and they've not changed anything. Pueblo, years ago, changed their system to a strong mayor, and they didn't change their system. They may have now, but fifteen years ago, they didn't. Most cities vote the way we do currently. By the presentation, you could see it's less than a handful. And a lot of those have repealed the way and have gone back to plurality. Something else that I was thinking about is this council wants to control the way voters vote now when the majority of us wouldn't support a proclamation for an elected mayor. Why do we want to change things now? And I guess I have a problem with that. So I think we need to think about it. The process has worked for a long time. And I think this council just needs to let the process that has worked continue.
Thank you, Member Wright. Member Ward.
The voters did what voters always do, which is they answered the question that was asked of them. The question that was asked of them was, do you want to directly elect the mayor? Yes or no? In a nutshell. The question was a little more complicated than that, but that was the question that we asked, and that was the question that the voters answered. The discussion we're having now is not about taking away the right to vote for the mayor. That's not on the table. The question is, do we have the best method for choosing who becomes the mayor? I would support asking the voters another question as opposed to this council unilaterally deciding how that gets done. So I think we have time to ask that question before the election occurs. And I think we can trust our people to do the same thing that they did in the last election cycle, which is to answer the question that we asked them. If we want to ask them more than one question, we can. There's no reason why we couldn't put ranked choice voting and a runoff and a primary on the same ballot. It might be a little confusing, but we could do that. But ultimately, I think we have the option of asking a question. Asking the question is not election interference. It's just asking for clarity on how the process gets executed.
Thank you, Member Ward. Member Pring.
Thank you, Mayor. I tend to agree largely with what Member Ward just said. I don't think that there was the question asked. But I think that now that the constituents have decided to direct-elect a mayor, it gives us an opportunity to have this discussion. But I do think that decision should be made by our constituents and not this council. I also may be way outside of the scope of the rest of council's thinking, but I like the idea of a primary. I just like the decisiveness of it, of getting us down to two candidates and then you're and I hear Member Noonan Camp's point, and I didn't think of that earlier, around the necessity of having a second round of elections. So, you know, there's a part of me that kind of still likes the idea of a primary and the decisiveness of that. But I think because of the citizens' initiatives being run the way that they did, and it did not address changing election methods, then we keep things as is because that question hasn't been asked. And we do things as our constituents are accustomed to doing them. And we ask the question, how do you want to do this in the future? how do you want to do this in the future? I just think that, that having, you know, a different method to elect a mayor has created the opportunity to ask that question. And I'm also somewhat on board with Member Counsel's or Member Russell's suggestion that we look at whether this should apply to all of council and not just the mayor position. I, I tend to agree with some of what you said around that.
Perfect. I will jump in. So I actually would be in favor of all of council being elected in a type of manner, which is the reason why my preference would be ranked choice voting, but, you know, it's not going to get us there. And obviously, just with some of the other issues that we've had over the past six months or so, with just a lot of the dialogue around what ranked choice voting is and whether it's fair or not, I'm just not sure if that's the direction that we want to go as a city. My preference would actually be the runoff option, but it does look like that kind of puts us as a split as a council in terms of what we want to do. So it kind of puts us as, based on just the fact that Mayor Protam last week stated his preference was a runoff, puts us at 3-2 and 2 for the three options that are in front of us. The primary, I'm kind of against just because of the timing of it, with it being May, in terms of what we have in the, in front of us. But what I'm looking at right now, I think that it's pretty, with where we're at, it just seems like there's no clear majority at this point. Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp, if you have anything to add.
Well, just after the conversation, you know, I am comfortable with Member Ward's suggestion of asking the voters. I think we could say, do you want a primary runoff or an instant runoff? Maybe we, if we could get enough votes to maybe nix the primary, I would support that. Just because I don't know if it's the right thing for the city of our size, but I, I would be fine with that. Obviously, it's expensive, but it's a really important question to ask. If we're asking that question, I'm sure that this will not be popular, but if I had been the citizens who were drafting this, this citizen initiative, I would have placed the mayor as one of the roles for next cycle, not this cycle, because we have two at-large roles next cycle. And so we always have that issue where we also don't have a majority in that race because it's to pick two out of the same at-large race instead of a one-on-one. We could ask that question. But I definitely think that we should ask the voters. So if there's a majority of council who want to do that, or we can wait until Member Anderson is back, we can ask him as well.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Go ahead, Member Wright.
I need clarification. Is this going to be on the general election for future or a special election? Because why would we spend money on a special election where we do it plurality this time, ask the question on the general election for it to be moving forward, and we're saving taxpayer money?
The way that I heard it would be a special election prior to the November election.
So why couldn't we do it on the general election for moving forward and not waste taxpayer money and do it moving forward for the next election?
Because the mayor vote is occurring this November. So then we wouldn't have the same rules in place for the initial mayor election.
Right. So it could be plurality this election and then moving forward, because from my understanding, it would apply to all elections. This election would be as normal. We would ask the question on this election, the general election, and then moving forward for all, and we're saving the taxpayers, what, $100,000, $130,000 on a special election?
Yep. That could be one of the options.
People threw a fit about a recall election cost in that much. Just a thought.
Thank you, Member Wright. Member Noonan Camp.
I mean, the alternative, alternative that's free is that we just decide tonight. We say, we think we should have a runoff. We could also then still put it on the ballot, and then if someone gets 50%, then we don't have to have a runoff. So I definitely think that I would like to see the city move to majority win our elections. I think it's very important to end democracy. But I'm, I am, I think this is a significant enough thing. I'm happy to ask the voters since they were not asked initially.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. I'm in that vote as well. I'd be fine with going with the special election at this point. I'd be happy to have that conversation as well, when we have a full council to kind of just see the timing and just make sure that a full body is comfortable with that decision. So I know we have four with that at this point, but I'd like to bring it up at least as part of mayor's choice next, well, not next week, but the first meeting back after the fifth Monday, so, which would be the seventh. I'm sorry?
Does that give us enough time to do what we would need to do?
City Clerk? Yep?
Yes. Yes, we could
Okay.
very quickly have that passed by ordinance.
All right. Perfect.
And start arranging for that.
So I will bring it back up during mayor's choice on the seventh, Monday, April 7th, and then while we should have a full council at that point, and just have that conversation again, basically just the, where we're currently standing as of right now, so. All right. Any further questions? Any comments? All right. Well, City Clerk and City Attorney, thank you very much for the presentation, for putting together all the facts. And we will talk about this again in a couple of weeks. Thank you so much. All right, everyone, now moving on to reports from boards and commissions. Anyone have anything to add? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
The library board met on Thursday, and it was our first meeting with our new library director, Rachel Fuel, who was settling into the role quite easily, it appears. She is doing a lot of work with the staff and getting the strategic plan ready for its kind of final round of feedback and implementation. I had the chance to attend one of the community task force meetings that I liaise as part of my role of the library board, and was really excited to see a lot of the mission and vision and kind of strategy around the library that I think that that department has really been needing. And I'm really excited to see that move forward, including questions that this body has been discussing, like what are the right hours for the library? What's the appropriate staffing level for the library? So a lot of the questions that we've been asking the staff for better data on to help us make those decisions as we enter another budget cycle, they're preparing for us. So wonderful meeting and really excited about the new leadership in the department. So congrats to the city manager and his team for that.
Member Russell.
Thank you. The Code Enforcement Advisory Committee met last Wednesday evening, and the, they actually have been going through Title 15 for the last few months. I don't remember how long it is. And, and the judge came to present to them about how, how the system works and, and the board's job and the code enforcement's job, and AJ, and the back and forth between the judge and him, just really presented to the board how things worked. And I think it was a very informative time for the board in helping them as we go through the code to evaluate things that may need to be addressed. So that was a great meeting. There was some, there was a question there that I'll have under council members' choice for council request.
Perfect. Anyone else? All right, now moving over to council members' choice. Anyone have anything to add tonight? Go ahead, Member Wright.
Okay. I have a laundry list, please. I'm warning city manager now. I received a call from somebody asking about the big square cutouts on Broadway between 285 and Bellevue. So they're wondering why they're like five by five, five by eight, and then there are flash fill, I guess, in those areas on southbound. I drove it myself, and I counted between 11 and 12 of them. And then when you drive northbound, you could see blue and yellow spray paint, which I think is sewer and water, where it looks like they're going to cut out also. So the question is, you know, what is this for? We just had all of Broadway repaved, I think, in 2023, and all of a sudden you have these big cutouts, which kind of ruins the integrity of that, you know, blacktop, I think that's what it's called, pavement. I don't know. So my council's request, you know, why was that done? And is there something going on that we need to know about? And are they going to repave it? Because it's just like this bill that's in there now, and there's a bunch of cutouts. They're big, so. My next request, and this is a series of, the end of cold weather sheltering is about the end of the season, and I've been thinking about it a lot. Where in Arapahoe County is the next closest cold weather overnight sheltering program? What is their overnight parameters to open? Example, temperature, snow, moisture, wind, that type of thing. Then the next one is, how much money has the county provided to each shelter to help with voucherering or keep their doors open, the sheltering service, or season, excuse me? The next question, please, is, I would like to see Hat Force's budget, including salaries for the past five years. This has been a taxpayer-funded service. Then number of people that have passed away during cold weather season in Inglewood, Littleton and Sheridan during the 2022, 2023 season, 2023, 2024, and then 2024, 2025 season. Dates that Hat Force sheltered people and the number of people this last cold weather season, and dates movement 5280 sheltered people, and how many people. And then the big question is, what are we going to do next year for the cold weather sheltering? Because there's no money. Arapahoe County has already told us that. Thank you.
Anything else? Member Wright?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Ward.
Just wanted to explain my absence last week. I had a family medical emergency in the previous week. My father was discharged from the hospital on Monday, so I was unable to attend Monday's council session as I needed to recover and deal with some ongoing issues with my aging parents. So thank you, everyone, for allowing me that absence.
So sorry to hear, Member Ward, and I hope your father's feeling better, so. All right. Anyone else? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. I have the one request from, this came from an individual in, on Code Enforcement Committee. The motorcycle racing has already started, and are we going to be addressing that? I mean, the motorcycles on Broadway are really loud. I've had, I haven't had so many complaints now, but last summer I had a lot, and they're doing dangerous things. So that's, that's one thing probably that needs to be addressed. The, then I have a question about the, the nonprofits, like Change the Trend, Cross Purposes, Bridge House, Cafe, 180 slash One Good Turn, Inglewood Lions Club, Hat Force, and Safer. We used to have a discussion, and I don't think we've had this for quite a while now, about funding nonprofits. And I don't know if there's a way that staff is funding nonprofits, whether, I don't know if Change the Trend or some of those cross purposes get money from the police department, out of the police department's budget, but is it possible to get a list of all income from the city to the nonprofits, whether it's in kind or whether it is actual financial? And then also, there was, there was a report that two people were wounded in a shooting. Were there any arrests? Was there a police report created? Then my next question is, has anybody been out to measure the lighting compliance at ANA Trade and Post on Sherman? Do you know the answer to that question?
Yes, I know answers to a couple of these questions, yes. And I sent you the full report. We've been out twice on that.
Oh, and they, did they go out to the citizens' yard and measure from there?
They did.
Okay.
And that was in the, the most recent email, but they were found to not be in compliance with one of those lights. And so we, that is going through the enforcement process now.
Okay. I appreciate that. And, and now that you say that, I do remember getting that email. So, and I don't need, that's not necessarily council request. And this might be for the mayor, although, when is the study session meeting rescheduled with the Cogstale representative?
Is that back on the schedule?
Can I have the city clerk look that up? And I can give into my city manager's report.
That'll be fine. Yeah. Okay. And that is it. Might be towards the end of the month, but I think we may have delayed it again. But thank you, Member Russell. We'll get an answer on that one. Perfect. A couple of updates for me. First, I'm not, does everyone use a city laptop? Member Noonan Camp, I think you may be the only one that doesn't. Anyway, we may be getting new laptops soon, within the next couple of weeks. So expect to hear from IT about replacements of the laptops, which will require each of us to come in at separate times to start the process. So they didn't give any particulars on how long that may last. It may be an hour or two, but just be, be, I'm trying to go off the conversation we had earlier. So it may just be an hour or so for them to just start changing the profiles and that type of thing before you get issued a new laptop. So that should happen over the next two or three weeks. So just be on the lookout for that. And then lastly, just want to provide everyone just a report on my travels to Belm, Germany, our sister city. Last week, I got to travel with Carla Schatz, who is one of the administrators at Inglewood High School, along with six high school juniors. The high school juniors got to stay with the host family who are there. I got to stay in a hotel in the, actually, it's the same city. Belm is actually pretty big for only being about 20,000 residents. There's a lot of farmland there. There is a city, there is a new city hall. There's a lot of similarities between us and Belm, which is pretty interesting. They kind of, they went through issues with homelessness and mental health issues about 20 years back, and they put programs in place to address those. Cost of living is very expensive there, but a lot of what they've done in the past is actually very, very interesting. Basically, as a history, Belm has been around forever. They, the city's basically been, were housing a lot of British troops during World War II, so they have a lot of the old-style housing within the city as well, which they turned into affordable housing to address some of the issues that they happen to have. They kind of worked it through, in order to update them, they kind of went through a public part, public-private partnership to kind of just start getting those upgraded. And that happened about 10 or 15 years ago. So they're doing good things. They're going through a lot of redevelopment as well. They're growing as a city. But many thanks to Victor Hermeller, who is the mayor. They were fantastic in terms of just being very hospitable towards me and just the high school students. They had something planned for us each day. Monday, we basically spent time at the school, and we signed the partnership agreement. And they brought out just about everyone. They brought out the previous mayor, who knows Mr. Sears, our previous city manager. He came and visited years back and basically just spoke very glowingly about Inglewood and about just the, the friendship that we had in the past. They, but basically, they had members from state parliament come and show up, members from the schools. They brought everyone out for this event. The newspapers were there, the newspaper from the next town over was there, from the bigger city. There was just a lot of pictures and a lot of just speaking to stakeholders, but it was a very cool experience, got to learn a lot. Next year, they're going to be coming out here. They already want to have discussions about, you know, what time of year they should come out here. And they were really interested to just learn about Inglewood, and they were just happy to have us there. But yeah, they basically, on Tuesday, we went to Amsterdam. We kind of did things there with the students. They had a delegation there that took us out to Amsterdam and showed us around. Wednesday, we went to their state parliament. They're part of the Lower Saxony State. So we had representatives that kind of toured us, gave us a tour of parliament, gave us a tour of just the city itself. Their new town hall is in a castle that was built, well, it's not a castle. It was a castle, but it was updated after the war or previous to the war, and then it had to get rebuilt after the war. But it was built basically or redone back about 1890 or so, but that's the But it was built basically or redone back about eighteen ninety or so, but that's the new town hall, uh, which I found interesting. Um, but just, so that was Wednesday. That was a, that was a really cool experience for the, the students as well. And then on Thursday, we took a trip to Cologne, which was a three-hour train ride as well, and got to see the city there as well. Um, overall, it's just a fantastic experience. I know the students and the high school are going to be coming out, uh, in two weeks on the seventh to kind of give an update on their experiences. But, um, I just, uh, they did give us a lot of things in order for us to kind of show off. But, uh, let me just show a couple of them. So one, they presented us a picture of their town. So we are going to be, we presented them a gift as well, which was, uh, the landmarks of Inglewood, uh, showing the Gothic, Pirates Cove, just, just, uh, just different, different things. And you know what? And they're excited. They are ready to come to Pirates Cove. We talked about it, and they, they are well aware of Pirates Cove, and it did come up quite a bit. But yeah, they, this is just, uh, some of the churches, I think one of the churches was built in the seventeen hundreds. Another one was built in eighteen hundred. They have a watermill that was built many years ago that they, they, uh, gave us a tour of as well. So this is one of the items that, uh, they presented to me. Here's the teaming agreement that we went ahead and signed. So I got one signed in German and as well as one in English. So I'll be providing this to staff. And they did want to provide everybody just with pins, just, uh, showcase or just highlighting our time there. Did I bring it? Please tell me I brought it. So pins for, uh, just members of council. It does have the emblem of Inglewood as well as the city of Belm, their coat of arms. So they handed these, they have pins for everything. They gave me a pin for, I have like five or six different pins that they handed to me while I was on the trip. So that was really cool, but we got plenty of these. Yeah, of course. And then this is, okay, so Monday, we traveled for about twelve hours. And it was overnight. We left at nine thirty PM on Saturday night. From here, we showed up there, seven PM their time. And we were exhausted, but it was only about twelve or so hours, but we didn't get much sleep on the plane. Anyway, we get off the plane. I was like, I wonder if they're going to be like waiting for us? If it's just going to be a couple of them just waiting for us? Or if they're going to make a big deal out of it? They made a big deal out of it. They had everyone there, and I wish I was recording it, but I wasn't. But they basically, while we stepped out of the airport, they had about thirty people waiting outside with these and waving them up these, uh, sashes, just showcasing like Belm and the city of Inglewood. And it was a really cool thing. I wish I had a video of it. I don't think anybody captured a video. But they did a great job of hosting us. I'm very thankful for, to their mayor, their staff, their citizens for just taking us in and embracing us, teaching us their history, teaching us their culture. It was a fantastic experience, but I just wanted to pass that along to everyone. Uh, and I want to thank you all for allowing me to, to be a part of this trip, so, thank you. Any questions? I guess we'll be talking about it again on the seventh, so, um, but just wanted to showcase that. Go ahead, Member Russell.
Actually, I, I think it would be a good idea for you to do that on the next council meeting and then present that to staff at the meeting, the, um...
The teaming agreement, and yeah, I, I'd be happy to do it, so.
Because I think that would be of interest to the community.
Yeah, instead of just doing it here while, you know, while everyone's gone. So, yeah, we could do that. So yeah, on the seventh, we can, I'll make sure to have everything here, uh, as well as, I think there were a couple of other items that they provided me, so. Yeah, I could do that. Thank you, Member Russell.
And then I just, I have a question. Is there a reason that we're being presented new laptops?
Uh, Sam, is there, is it just because these are older laptops? And update me if there's anything that I...
Um, yeah, from what I heard, I was talking with Brandon, my, uh, IT manager. Um, he just mentioned, I think we're just in the process of updating, um, laptops in general. And then we know you guys have laptops that are starting to get out of warranty. So that way, there's issues, you know, it's hard to, to fix them. So I think that's basically where that's coming from, so.
That works?
Okay, thank you.
I think so. And Member Noonkamp?
I had a question for the city manager around the sister cities. Do we have a plan to share with the community about the trip? Is that going to be in the magazine or newsletter or anything like that?
Yes, your first study session in, on April seventh will be the students coming and presenting to council. And then I think, uh, it's the third Wednesday in, uh, April. Our other funding partner for this Rotary will get a presentation from the students. And then, um, uh, Carla Schatz at the high school is, she's, happens to be the journalism teacher. So she's putting together a whole, you know, um, presentation. I think they're going to have some video, um, and so they want to really put that out. That will go to all the school community, but I hope that we can echo that, um, in, uh, for instance, the magazine. We've got a picture of the delegation that's going to be in the come, upcoming magazine that's being written now. Um, so those are some of the ways. But we'd love your thoughts and suggestions on other ways to promote that.
I think it would just be interesting to see it in the magazine, some of the photos from the trip. Um, and what does it mean to have a sister city? If someone's going to Germany, they want to visit. You know, I'm just thinking, it might be nice just to raise awareness about it, that's all.
Yeah, and Member Noonkamp, I am, I basically already read it. I'm writing my article, uh, coming up on, on it just because I had so many things to say while I was on the trip. So that will happen. Um, I'm thinking, was there something else I wanted to add to that? But, well, we'll just talk about it on the seventh if I forgot it, so. All right, cool. Well, yeah, thank you very much. And yeah, thanks to the Rotary as well, because they did put up funds for the students as well as, uh, for this trip. But, uh, city council, Rotary, thank you very much. All right. All right, with that, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of items. Um, first of all, um, Member Russell, it's, uh, April twenty-first was the first time that the consultant could reschedule her, um, uh, travel, uh, to be here. And so that's when we will have the, um, update from Cogswell, um, executive. Uh, also, just wanted to answer the question, Member Wright, about the Broadway cuts. So almost all of these approximately five by eight cuts that you're seeing, um, around town, um, are for the lead service line replacement. So we're doing that up and down Broadway. What we did, if you remember, we had, um, this big coordination when we did the downtown area last paving season, um, for Broadway. And that was the one section that didn't get done, um, a couple of years ago, is we got, went in and did all of those lead service line, um, replacements before the paving project started. It was a lot of coordination. For the, the other sections, um, you may also remember, I think, I don't think you were on council yet, but we were directed to pave Broadway. And so staff did that. And, um, but, but council really wanted that to be a priority in that paving, um, contract here. And so we went ahead and paved that. And yes, we have to go in and do patching now. Um, but what we've got is guarantees from the, um, lead service line, um, company that's doing that replacement, that their paving will be warranted. And so beyond that, then the utilities department is, um, essentially providing a backup warranty to Public Works, that if there is any settling or anything that will not be repaired by the contractor, then utilities will come in and do that too. So we have a lot of guarantees that we're going to be, um, you know, uh, successful in these patches. Right now, you're right, it's a flow fill, um, so you even had the right terminology. And that is a temporary patch because you can't put asphalt down when it's this cold. So you have to wait until temperatures get to a certain degree, and then we can start doing the hot patches, which are much more all-weather surface that will really hold up with that very compacted flow fill material underneath it.
Okay, thank you for that. So because we weren't doing the lead service lines when you were told to do Broadway, you weren't able to do those lead lines before redoing Broadway?
Yes, that's essentially correct. Basically, in all of the other areas of the city where we're doing lead service lines, we are coordinating to get the utilities department in and out of those areas before we do the paving. And so we started this last year. We actually had to cut the paving short because, um, we were not going to be able to coordinate that. So we actually didn't do paving that we had funding for. That money rolled over, and we're going to do more this year than, than, uh, last year. Um, but we wanted to make sure that we were getting in there, doing all of these, um, cuts in our roadways before we paved them, um, so that we weren't, you know, tearing into new streets. We could not do that on Broadway because first of all, at that time, when we paved Broadway the first segments on either side of downtown, that, we thought that the lead service line project was going to be a nine-year project. It wasn't until we got WITIA funding, until we got, um, so the state revolving loan fund funding, that we realized we could do this in three years potentially. And so that sped up lead service lines, but we had already paved Broadway by then. But we have many guarantees that we're going to make sure that all these patches, um, hold up, um, you know, in, in the future.
Okay, so they did south, and then they're getting ready to do northbound Broadway now? Is from what it was looking from the markings that I was seeing?
I believe that's right, but we can confirm that.
Okay, yeah, because it's southbound that has the five by, see, I even got the five by eight guess on that too. So, okay, thank you, that makes sense.
I also, I, I will need to follow up with the council requests, um, for some clarification. You gave lots of parameters in terms of the timeframe, but there are a couple of, uh, your questions that I'll need more clarification for. I bring this up because we have missed the mark on a couple of council requests that are given at council. And that's just because there's not the opportunity for dialogue that there is when you either email those in or when we have a discussion during one-on-ones. And so it's hard for us to know exactly what you're asking, um, sometimes from the, when these are given at council. Um, so I'll do those follow-ups, um, first thing tomorrow, um, for any of that information. I just want to close with, um, some utilities updates. As of, um, March twentieth, um, we AMI, which is our, um, automated, excuse me, advanced meter infrastructure, the contractor had changed out, um, six thousand two hundred and forty-three meters. So we're really closing in on that project for the city. Um, utilities and their contract management with the, uh, AMI contractor has been really gone as smoothly as really it could have. And then lead service line, um, to continue that as of March twentieth, um, we have done a total of seven hundred and twenty-four lead or galvanized service lines that have been replaced. And, um, as you know, we have been anticipating that that number, um, will probably be around, I believe it's twenty-five hundred total, is what we estimated when we did our sampling, uh, last, uh, year, last year. So, um, the lead was, uh, reduction program's continuing, um, to replace in the central south zone. And so the contractor is scheduled to replace forty-five lead or galvanized, um, lines in the next week. And the majority of those replacements are going to incur in the forty-one hundred to forty-seven hundred, um, blocks of South Fox and the forty-five hundred to forty-five, forty-seven hundred blocks of South Galapagos. So, um, a lot of work going on there, and appreciate the community's patience as we get these, um, finished, so. Uh, that's all I have for tonight, Mayor, and I'll be glad to take any questions.
Any further questions from members of council? All right, everyone, it is nine PM. This meeting is adjourned. There's a fifth Monday next week, so we're off. See you on April seventh. Have a good evening.